Okay, board members, please turn your cameras on. So, yeah, yeah, we'll need your video on. Thank you. Okay, we are recording and we are live on YouTube. Gloria, you have majority of the board members here, so you are free to call it to order if you choose.
All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is six o'clock. Before we move into the agenda, just some logistics about public comment. So you will, you are going to be in the waiting room up until we call, get to public comment. We have several resolutions that we will be reading off and approving as a board. So if you, you can watch us on YouTube. You will enter one by one into our meeting at public comment time. Once you enter in the meeting, then we ask that you just sign off of YouTube so that we can hear you clearly and we're not getting any feedback. Okay. Yep, so now we are going to move into the recitation of the vision statement, and that is every school will be thriving school that prepares every student to graduate from high school, college, career, and community ready. The first resolution, it is the resolution recommending legislation for the expansion of affordable quality broadband in Wisconsin and for district broadband access funding to ensure equity in student learning. And I will read the resolutions and then we will go ahead and, and vote on them. Whereas some Wisconsin students lack broadband access due to affordability, and whereas some Wisconsin students lack broadband access due to insufficient or unreliable quality, and whereas some Wisconsin school districts are unable to provide Wi-Fi cards or hotspots to students, and whereas reliable accessible broadband is a necessary tool as part of a strong public education, and whereas the COVID-19 pandemic highlighted the crucial need for affordable working broadband access for all students and teachers. And whereas students without broadband access will be left behind their peers, and whereas the Wisconsin Supreme Court has determined that the equal opportunity to education as defined of the Wisconsin State Constitution is a fundamental right, and whereas a lack of broadband access denies students an equal opportunity to education in mandated virtual learning, and whereas lack of broadband access generally results in inequitable public education for socio-economically disadvantaged students over students in rural Wisconsin without access. Now therefore be resolved that the Wisconsin Association of School Boards supports legislation to expand affordable quality broadband access for all Wisconsin communities. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards supports funding for school districts to ensure broadband access for students and staff. And the Wisconsin Association of School Boards supports efforts of Governor Evers Task Force on broadband access and others working to advise the governor and Wisconsin State Legislature on broadband actions and policy and initiatives for digital, digital inclusion. Be it further resolved that this statement be permanently imprinted in the Board of Education Minutes for the regular meeting held on August 31st, 2020. I move that the Madison Metropolitan School District Board of Education join the Wausau School District Board of Education in support of the attached resolution relative to recommending legislation for expansion of affordable quality broadband in Wisconsin and for the district broadband access funding to ensure equity in student learning. This resolution will be submitted to the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Policy Resolution Committee for the potential to be voted on by all Wisconsin school districts at the annual convention, convention in January 2021. Second, Ali Muldoon. Ali Muldoon, second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, show of hands. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Next resolution. Resolution recommending funding to assist school district compliance with Act 31. Whereas Act 31 is required state law mandating instruction on history, culture, and tribal sovereignty of the 11 federally recognized indigenous tribes in Wisconsin, at least twice in elementary years and once in secondary years. And whereas Act 31 originated from the misunderstanding surrounding tribal treaty rights, history, culture, tribal sovereignty, and political status, and from the social unrest surrounding the 1983 void decision. And whereas state and tribal leaders sought to provide students with accurate academically appropriate education to combat societal misunderstanding and social unrest with Act 31 legislation. And whereas a lack of Act 31 compliance exists today, and whereas the, the lack of compliance with Act 31 contributes to a continued misunderstanding of indigenous history, treaty rights, culture, sovereignty, political status, and the enduring existence of the 11 federally recognized Wisconsin tribes today. And whereas this misunderstanding impacts human relations, and whereas the Wisconsin Code of Ethics for public officials declares that high moral and ethical standards among public officials are essential. And whereas school boards have legal and ethical obligation to ensure district compliance with the law. And whereas the same school districts may struggle to meet the educational requirements of Act 31 due to a lack of resources and materials. Whereas the Wisconsin Association of School Boards supports the principle and the primary objective for student assessment to improve student achievement, and the districts should measure competency through performance assessment measures. Now therefore be resolved, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, School Boards calls upon its members, its member boards to recognize their responsibilities and fulfill the requirements of Act 31. And the Wisconsin Association of School Boards supports initiatives that promote increased student academic competency regarding Act 31. And the Wisconsin Association of School Boards supports legislation that would provide funding to better enable Wisconsin public school districts meet this mandate. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards urges the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction to develop an audit process to ensure Act 31 requirements are met. Be it further resolved that this statement be permanently imprinted in the Board of Education Minutes for the regular meeting held on August 31st, 2020. Second. Oh, I'm sorry, I gotta read the, the action item here. I move that the Wisconsin Metropolitan School District Board of Education join the Wausau School District Board of Education to support the attached resolution relative to recommending funding to assist school district compliance with Act 31. This resolution will be submitted to the Wisconsin Association of the School, of School Boards Policy Resolution Committee for the potential to be voted on by all Wisconsin school districts at the annual convention, convention in January 2021.
Second.
Second, thank you Nikki. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, aye? Show of hands. Oh, I'm sorry, Ananda.
Um, I, I'm not sure if it's needed to add or if there's any adjustments, and I, I missed this when I, when it first got posted, but I would like to, for us to also recognize the Brother Town Nation. This is a nation that has been in Wisconsin for many, many decades and have been fighting for federal recognition for the past 200 years.
Okay, so you want to add that to the can we? Resolution itself?
Can we?
Barb, can we, go ahead. This, this resolution is coming from the Wausau School District.
I think that it's, this resolution will come up formally again in December. Of all the resolutions will be going from the entire state at that time. I could ask them to modify this one to add the nation that you're talking about.
I think that's a good idea.
I have one more comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Act 31 intends to elevate the factual history of indigenous people in this country, and is a really important act. What's also very important and is often missed is that Act 31 also include a responsibility for all of us as board members to elevate the history of Black and African people, Latinx people, and Hmong, and other Southeast Asian folks from our community, and it's really important to make that salience to folks that perhaps only hear from one aspect or from one community.
Thank you, Ananda. Very true. All right, so Nikki, second. We had discussion. All those in favor, aye? Raise a hand, okay. Is there Savion? Okay, motion passes. Next is the resolution to retire the Native American mascot symbols, images, logos, and nicknames. As I, as you recall, I went to the convention last year on this and it failed. So we're gonna go ahead and try this again at the convention in January, so. I'll read the resolution and then we'll, we'll vote. Whereas continued use of Native American mascot symbols, images, logos, and nicknames undermines the educational experience of members of all communities. And whereas the continued use of Native American mascot symbols, images, logos, and nicknames teaches non-Native American children that it is acceptable to engage in culturally abusive behavior and perpetuate inaccurate misconceptions about Native American people, culture, history, sovereignty, governments, customs, and traditions. And whereas the continued use of Native American mascot symbols, images, logos, nicknames establishes an unwelcome divisive and hostile, hostile learning environment for Native American students that affirms negative stereotypes that are promoted in mainstream society. And whereas the continued use of Native American mascot symbols, images, logos, and nicknames is an offensive and intolerable practice to Native American tribal nations that must be eradicated. And whereas the continued use of Native American mascot symbols, images, logos, and nicknames has a negative impact on other communities by allowing for the perpetuation of stereotypes and stigmatization of another cultural group. And whereas the continued use of Native American mascot symbols, images, logos, and nicknames undermines the ability of Native American tribal nations to portray respectful and accurate images of their history, culture, government, sovereignty, customs, and traditions. And whereas in 2005, the American Psychological Association called for immediate retirement of Native American mascot symbols and images because of the harm caused to the social identity development and self-esteem of Native American students because non-Native American students witness perpetuation of derogatory stereotypes. And whereas continued use of the Native American mascot symbols, images, logos, and nicknames does not empower Native American students towards academic achievement and success. And whereas Wisconsin is comprised of 421 public schools, school districts, and approximately 31 districts retain use of Native American mascot symbols, images, logos, or nicknames. And whereas Wisconsin recognizes the importance of education regarding the 11 federally recognizes, recognized tribes in Wisconsin through Act 31, but Wisconsin Association of School Boards and Wisconsin Department of Public Construction's report, most school districts do not fully comply with Act 31 requirements. Now therefore be it resolved, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards supports legislation requiring school districts to retire Native American mascot symbols, images, logos, and nicknames. Be it further resolved that the statement is permanently imprinted in the Board of Education Minutes for the regular meeting held August 31st, 2020. Then, I move that the Board of, the Madison School, Madison Metropolitan School District Board of Education join the Wausau School District Board of Education in support of the attached resolution relative to recommending legislation requiring school districts retire Native American mascot symbols, images, logos, and nicknames. This resolution will be submitted to the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Policy Resolution Committee for the potential to be voted on by all Wisconsin school districts on the, at the annual convention in January 2021. A second. Ananda, second. Ali, did you have a comment?
No, I just second.
Okay, great.
Gloria, can you ask Julia for her advisory, please?
Oh, sorry, Julia, your advisory wrote? Aye, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Next, we will move on to written registration. We received one written registration tonight, and that was a, supporting the process to rename Memorial High School. And a copy of the full statement is attached to this agenda item. If board members have not read it, I encourage you to read it. It was very enlightening and in support of reason why we should rename Memorial High School. Okay. Public appearance.
There were no public appearances registered.
Okay.
Thank you.
We will move on to the Board President's announcements and reports. Ocean Blayuter, Blayuter is an eighth grade Hamilton student and is the Wisconsin winner of 2020 doodle for Google contest. Ocean Bayuter, a rising eighth grade student at Velma Hamilton Middle School, was announced the Wisconsin winner of the 2020 doodle for Google contest earlier this month. Ocean's drawing is one of 54 doodles that will advance to the next round in which five national finalists will be chosen. Her drawing aims to portray the beautiful relationships between animals and people. Ocean hopes her doodle will shout a wake-up to the world that animals deserve happy life just like us. The board congratulates Ocean Bayuter for her artistic accomplishment and hopes she advances to the next, to the next round of the national contest. Congratulations. Parents and social workers provide aid to MMSD families. Back in March of this year, Madison's social workers and parents started the Madison West High School Area Collaborative. This partnership consists of weekly volunteers who pack and deliver groceries to more than 375 families and has helped over 100 families with rent. The group continues to work to make sure their families have basic needs met and will continue to provide services into the fall as MMSD schools will stay virtual only. The Board highly appreciates the Madison West High Area Collaborative and all it does to do everything possible to help our families in these unprecedented times. Thank you. Next, I will go ahead and turn it over to Chris Carusi, who will give us. Chris, are you there? Do I see you? Sorry, referenda?
Yep, thank you Gloria. So on July 13th, we voted to place two questions on the November 3rd ballot that together if passed would invest $350 million into Madison's public schools. The 2020 referenda include investments in classrooms and strategic equity projects and improvements to facilities, including major upgrades to our four comprehensive high schools, a new school on the South Side, and MMSD-owned facilities for Capitol High and Nuestro Mundo. We believe these investments will be critical to our district. Before COVID-19, MMSD was projecting a 30 million budget gap over the next three years. Now with state budget freezes and cuts due to COVID-19, we're predicting that gap could be much larger. My school board, my fellow school board members and I are mindful of the financial struggles that so many families in our community are going through right now, and we recognize the additional financial burden that we are asking the community to take at this time. Our community's feedback, however, both through last fall and winter and through the summer, is a big part of the reason we decided to move forward to go to referenda. This is an absolutely critical time for our public schools to provide greater stability for students and families and to stay closely connected to them, focused on social, emotional well-being and academic achievement. Many students who live in the Rimrock area neighborhood will have the opportunity for an elementary school of their very own if this referenda passes, and tonight we're gonna talk about building a new elementary school to serve the students living in that neighborhood. One of our most significant tasks as a board over the next two months is making sure the community knows about and understands the referenda that will be on the ballot. We're organizing lots of meetings and forums, and to learn more, people can go to mmsd.org and click on, click on the link to the 2020 referenda.
Great, thank you, Chris. Okay, next, we will move on to report on items that proceeded through the instruction work group held on August 30th, 2020.
Oh, Gloria, go back to superintendent's announcements here.
Did I screw that up? Okay, hold on.
You skipped over. That's okay.
Okay, go ahead, pass it on to Dr. Jenkins. Sorry about that.
Okay, I had to unmute there. Thank you so much, Chair Reyes, for that, those presentations, and now at this time we're gonna talk about back-to-school updates and our grading update, and we have been receiving questions about a couple things, what's gonna happen going back to school, and also on our grading policy, so we have Ms. Kistler, who's gonna go tonight along with our chiefs of schools, who will be doing the presentation tonight, and at this time, I want to have them go ahead and go through the presentation back to school.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Good evening, everyone. We are excited to be talking to you tonight about our back-to-school update and also our secondary grading practice work. Before I start, I just want to note that Dr. Marvin Pryor is on the meeting with us tonight, our new chief of secondary schools. We want to wish him a warm welcome, and I know that you will be seeing more of him in the year to come. So, Dr. Pryor, if you are out there and can turn on your camera and give us a wave, we would all like to give you a proper welcome.
Greetings to everyone. Just want to say that I am so thrilled and delighted, really honored to be able to join the MMSD family. I have spent about three and a half weeks being updated and initiated, as you will, with the MMSD way, and I am really excited with the things that I've seen and individuals that I've met. It's obvious that you have a lot of talent there, and I'm looking forward to partnering with them and doing everything that we can do to ensure that every student, every child in MMSD is privy to a quality educational experience while they're with us. And when they leave, we want to make sure that they have viable options and moving forward in this society of ours. So again, thank you for having me, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Pryor. There you are.
There you go.
All right, so, um, tonight, our focus on our back-to-school presentation will be on our intentional and focused engagement strategies and how we've gone about deepening our connections to Black and Brown communities and our other communities that have been most marginalized. Our chiefs will be presenting this information during the first half of the conversation tonight. Just as a reminder, you all have the instructional continuity plan that has a lot of details and guidance about roles and responsibilities and all the technical pieces of the work of Welcome Back. You've heard about professional development. You've heard about the summer work group with over 150 staff members. And just wanted to let you know that all of that is available to you in the virtual learning plan. But this presentation is actually about the adaptive work. This is about the engagement work that we're doing before the year even starts and during these really first important days. This is about the proactive piece, the human relationship building. We can talk about the technical work all day long, and you and I know I can go on for hours about that. But tonight, it is really about how the first day of school will look for children and families. We have an important year ahead of us, and we have a very important first day coming up. As some of you have heard me say, and this is really the elementary heart and soul that I have, a child gets to be a first grader one time. A child gets to be a seventh grader one time. And we're committed to making sure that the first day is meaningful for our students and families, and we look forward to sharing with you how intentional and focused we actually are to get after this engagement work. So I am going to turn it over to Tremaine as he starts our back-to-school presentation, and then I'll come on again and do a little bit of a preamble before the grading update.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lisa. Again, I'm Dr. Tremaine Clarity, co-chief of schools for elementary, and I'd like to thank the Board of Education and Dr. Jenkins for the opportunity to present alongside my magnificent team of chiefs. Today's presentation will provide insight into the strategies and mindsets that were used to develop our plan for fall reentry. The fall reentry plan is built with explicit intentionality to engage our Black and Brown and other traditionally marginalized students and families. While we use stakeholder feedback and collaborative problem solving, we know that's not enough. Nationwide, there are virtual systems and plans that are being developed, and that's fine, but we're Madison. And that means more responsibility for intentional engagement and more accountability to our Black and Brown families to change historical disproportionate outcomes. You go to slide two, please. MMSD has and will continue to monitor public health guidelines in our decision-making as we prioritize safety. To develop our fall entry plan, we utilize extensive feedback and research to transition MMSD from crisis learning to intentional focused virtual instruction for the fall and beyond. Each strategy of acceleration and engagement was designed with intentionality to meet the needs of our Black and Brown, other marginalized students and families by explicitly reaching out to these stakeholders and receiving and delivering on their feedback. Based on stakeholder feedback, one more, put this bar. Other way. One more. Thank you. Based on our stakeholder feedback, we learned in our executing plans that will increase live teacher synchronous instruction and learning. We normed and chose user-friendly platforms in the form of Seesaw and Google Classroom for ease of use and better engagement. We increased communication frequency in support of improved clarity, support, and guidance. And furthermore, we're using our specific engagement data to have a proactive approach in our outreach for additional hotspots and Wi-Fi services. The plan allowed us to create and execute intentionality in building relationships, especially for those critical transition grades and students that experience disruptive learning in the spring. Moving forward, we'll use the data from universal screeners to diagnose our students' unfinished learning, to prioritize standards and prerequisite content for knowledge and skills, and to uplift our focus on formative assessments, which drives instruction that is focused on student growth. Shortly, you will transition to my esteemed colleague, Ms. Stanford, who'll give you some specific details moving forward. Ms. Stanford?
Good evening, everyone. I am Carla Stanford, and I am a co-chief of schools for elementary. As discussed by Dr. Clarity, stakeholder feedback, in addition to our learnings from intentional and targeted summer programming for students, provided information that allowed us to make intentional pivots to how we would implement virtual learning for the fall. One way in which improvement will occur is through our alignment 4K through 12. The alignment will allow us to deepen the areas that are essential to ensuring equitable instruction and access for students. One of those areas is around us being able to reimagine how we were, how we are delivering instruction to students. We do not want to create learning environments that focus on remediation, but rather ones that intentionally seek to accelerate learning, specifically for our most marginalized students. We also know that in a time in which we are experiencing two pandemics, both with COVID-19 and racial unrest, that we must not only prioritize academics, but social, emotional learning standards as well. This will be achieved through specific expectations regarding the frequency in which students will receive synchronous and asynchronous instruction, and also in the universal expectations and supports in how we address the social, emotional needs and well-being of our students. Next slide, please. Moving from our 4K through 12 alignment and universal supports, we also implemented intentional focus group support for how we uplift Black excellence, support English language learners, special education students, low-income students, and advanced learners. When taking into account intersectionality, our supports will intentionally engage Black and Brown students in the aforementioned focus groups. Mike will give a high-level overview of the specific intentional strategies that will be incorporated to support students that experience disrupted learning. Mike?
Can you go to the next slide, please? Hello, my name is Mike Fernandez. I am one of the two chief of secondary schools. I have the pleasure to talk about some of the intentional supports that we have established for our students. And I'm going to give a few examples. One of the first examples is our student ambassadors. We had a few schools that participated in this, and we're hoping to learn from this and expand it through the district, where older students will be linked with younger learners. An example would be a La Follette feeder pattern, in which La Follette worked with both Senate and Frank Ellis Elementary School, in which we were able to bring some students, some high school students that were disengaged, but we saw a change in engagement as they found themselves being mentors to these youth. Another strategy that we're bringing in is Central Office Mentoring Program. Well, what we are looking at doing is modeling what we're asking staff to do. What we will do is we will find, we will look and look at data to see students that have not engaged after a week or two of school, and then we'll be assigning central office staff to, we have the word adopt, but to partner, to mentor these students, contacting homes, and then contacting students and doing weekly check-ins to provide supports. The engagement advisory model is something new that we began working on and learned from over the summer, in which all students are going to be assigned staff members to support this engagement. I want to thank TJ for working around ways in which we're able to use our systems as opposed to staff using their personal cell phones to contact our students. The instructional continuity plan, I struggle with that word continuity. The instructional continuity plan was first introduced over the last 13 weeks of school and into the summer. What you'll see is it's been highly updated and using feedback and survey data we received from families, from students, and from staff. And you'll see that it is truly set and focused on attempting to look at instructional strategies that are more culturally relevant and engaging for our students. And the last bullet is our community partners. And the next slide, I'm going to talk a little bit more in detail. Barb, can you go to the next slide, please? First, I want to thank Nichelle Nichols' team, Bryn, because what they have established and what they have set up is an extremely impressive and easy-to-use look at the partners that our schools have. We're blessed here in Madison to have as many community partners that want to help and support our students. Through what you see in this, in the slide, is that we have staff, I mean, I'm sorry, we have partners that are willing to and hoping to be able to help us for these essential needs. When school starts, we'll have over 1,000 students in our childcare systems that will receive academic supports and wraparound services. We'll have 150-plus staff being able to help support our children. These are future or current MMSD students. You'll also see that these proactive relationships that we have set up over the summer, examples being Boys and Girls Club, Upper Bound, Dear Diary, in which we're sitting down and reaching out to our students through the summer to continue to keep them engaged in the school and attempt to make sure that all students are making positive choices. The continually adjusting the scope of the work is understanding that our schools are not just a place where students are learning. Examples would be Noisier Mundo, Badger Rock Memorial, our Madison Foundation, the 100 Black Men of reaching out and providing needed essential supplies and materials for our families, food distribution, being able to get school supplies for our schools coming in. Again, these partnerships, these partners that are reaching out to our families. And the last is, again, just reaching again and working at childcare. And currently, we're working around ways in which we'll be able to provide tutoring after schools, working with our partners to be able to help students and families that do not have some privileges that allow them to work in pods. Barb? Going to transition to Dr. Clarity now?
Thank you, Mike. In the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic, we must recognize the additional impact of the continuous pandemic of racism and the physical and emotional impact on our Black and Brown families. While it is important to train our staff for virtual instruction delivery and consistent platforms, it is equally and more important that we design educational systems that promote educating in a way that does not create more Amy Coopers. Because what we do know is that Amy Cooper-type behaviors towards Black and Brown people can lead to seven shots in the back or a knee in your neck. That intentionality to our work is what I want to come across loud and clear as we execute our fall reentry plan. Those priorities around anti-racism and the work that our staff will engage in. In closing, I would like to uplift this quote from Dr. Bettina Love. "To love all children, we must struggle together to create the schools we are taught to believe are impossible. Schools built on justice, love, joy, and anti-racism, even in a virtual age. MMSD can and will accomplish this." I'd like to thank you all for your opportunity to speak. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins, for allowing the chiefs to present, and we're open for any questions at this time.
Thank you so much, all of you, for that. Very informative. Thank you. Dr. Jenkins, did you need to add anything before we open it up to the board? You're on mute.
I am going to close out after the grading piece. That's it.
Okay. Any comments from the board, questions? Nikki? You're on mute.
I appreciate the plans. I think they're good. I would like a little more specifics just on how we're going to meet the IEP goals, especially on Black and Brown students who have disabilities, because oftentimes those IEP goals are very difficult to meet, especially in a virtual setting. And I know you've got, we are all doing our best, and this is difficult. I'd just like to see a little more specifics, if that's okay. Otherwise, I think this tremendous work, and thank you.
Nikki, I can start with this, and then we do have John on the line for more detail. John and his team are reconvening over 400 IEPs. You can imagine that. And we are meeting with families and IEP teams to determine what services a student needs according to their goals in the IEP. And John has been in constant communication with special education teachers and SEA to delineate those, and whether they can be delivered in a virtual or small group setting. He has been working with DPI around health practices and the Department of Health around safety practices. But we are busily, we are very busy reconvening IEPs and readjusting staffing. As you know, for every third Friday and all of the allocation that we do, we always take another snapshot look at where resources are. Remember that we're using the weighted student formula. We expanded that to the district. So John is taking a look at if there needs to be any shifts in support or allocation across the district as well. John, I see you down there. Is there anything that you would want to add to that sort of higher-level summary? I think you're on mute, John. So I can't hear you.
So he's not on mute. There's something else going on there.
Something may be wrong with the system microphone.
Yes. I think you're right, Savian.
Maybe you can log off and log back in.
You may need to log off and log back in, John. Nikki, let's hold a placeholder for that. And when John comes back on, we can get your question more fully answered.
Yeah, and please, such as Sharice, if John's not able to get back on, I may be able to help. So just wanted to offer that.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other board members? Ali?
Yeah, I want to thank you all for speaking so expansively about the work that you're doing. And Lisa, I want to thank you again for leading us at this time with such enthusiasm for creating, you know, significant and transformative learning opportunities for our children. And Nikki, I appreciate you honing in on the needs of our young people with disabilities and making sure they're at the forefront of this conversation and our work. I think, you know, we've had a lot of conversations about discipline and behavior, and we haven't touched on that as an aspect of virtual learning. I am curious as to what conversations around conduct and expectations in terms of behavior look like right now for our young people.
Hey, quiet.
Jay, do you want to talk a little bit about the social emotional resources and other resources for staff and students as we enter into the year? Jay, on, I'm just saying, as a parent, I would like to know how to suspend my kids from virtual learning at home.
At least I don't see Jay, but I do see John Harper back.
All right, John, go for it.
And we can hear you, and we heard you.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right.
That's how you do virtual learning discipline, right there.
There you go. Yeah, so actually, Lisa did a very nice job of just providing a broad overview of our process. She is correct in that we have either reconvened IEP meetings, had conversations with each family regarding what services can and cannot be provided in a virtual start, like while we're going ahead with the start of the 2021 school year. This is an extraordinarily complex and difficult time for many students with disabilities to access educational services via online. But we're doing the best we can, given the circumstances. We've learned a tremendous amount in the last nine weeks of the last school year, and we're applying new methods, strategies, and a renewed sense of like focus for students with disabilities. And I mean, I guess I'm feeling like we're starting the year not in the ideal spot, but we're going to be very much focusing on the implementing student IEP programs and to the best of our ability. So Nikki, I don't know if you had any really specific questions. Be happy to answer those now.
Actually, I have one really quick. Ali? Damn it. Sorry about all of this. Is that okay? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can.
No, like, very simply, do we need to set aside money for possible compensatory services? Is my main one, for the things we cannot provide in a virtual environment.
Yeah, I don't think that you need to think about like setting aside anything. So I have like, within the special ed budget, I have kind of saved money for, you know, the revised term with the pandemic is additional services. So those are services to be provided to students with disabilities to mitigate the impact of the school closure. So we already have like a contingency plan for budgeting that. It's sort of two different categories. One is IDEA flow-through that we underspent last year on purpose so that we could build up a bit of carryover. And second, through the CARES Act monies, there are some of those resources dedicated for students with disabilities. That's another element or area where we will be providing staff with additional services times so that they're able to provide those to students. Now, that's going to be a bit challenging, just given the start of the school year. However, we have between now and the end of next summer to provide the additional services so we can use breaks and summer to provide these additional services.
Thank you. That was my main question.
Nikki, I would also say we've been meeting with John and his team to really focus on the engagement strategies that we're using with families and how families are perceiving the IEP process, making sure that it is an asset-based approach to how we're working with children. We know that, right, that can feel very technical and very much a formidable experience for families. So we've been, we talked last week, actually, with Nichelle about what kinds of things do we need to do proactively to help families navigate that process and actually advocate for their own child and the needs that they have in a virtual environment.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yeah, maybe if I could just add one more spotlight. So as Lisa noted, a special project that we have this year is to deeply analyze our IEP documents for language, specifically language that is either promoting Black excellence or potentially inhibiting that. And we're trying to do a very, very thoughtful and careful analysis on that to, number one, to apprise our staff as to how powerful language can be in terms of either uplifting student, their mindset, their confidence, and their educational attainment. And it can also have the opposite effect of turning off students and families. And we want to be very, very cautious when we're writing IEPs so that it is a supportive document, not something that it is seen as like deficient-minded and actually represses student learning growth. So that is, while we've had professional development and guidelines in the past, we're taking a much deeper analysis, given the times we're in. And we feel it's like reasonable to really analyze ourselves in line with our strategic framework, in line with the idea of promoting Black excellence in all of its different dimensions.
I appreciate that. Being a child of the 80s with the IEPs of the deficit-based model, it's not necessarily the best thing for any child to go through. So appreciate.
You're welcome.
Great question, Nikki. Thank you. Ali, now, did we get your question answered? I see Jay just popped in.
Hey, good evening, everyone. If, Ali, I'll do my best to cover your question. If I didn't cover all pieces of it, please let me know. But Bryn Martinez is leading our work for application of the Behavior Education Plan during virtual learning. Of course, at the start of every school year, we're looking to build strong relationships and strong learning communities. And as usual, we want the BAP to offer protection to everyone in classrooms. And our teachers are going to be watching carefully for things that might be harmful to developing those relationships or obviously any pieces of the BAP around use of language towards peers, towards the teacher, et cetera. It's obviously completely different in a virtual space. But our teachers are also aware that if it's in a synchronous space and a student is doing something that's clearly harmful or using language that's harmful to other students, the teacher knows how to either mute or prevent that student's words from being seen by others and then following up with our support staff in buildings. Mike Hernandez, I saw you wanted to jump in. Go ahead.
Yeah, just to on top of that, Ali, I think, I know that you're aware that we have been meeting with our safety and security ad hoc committee, and we've been having conversations. I'm not sure if Savian and Gloria have shared about understanding the consistency of our restorative justice, our restorative practices. Part of the reason why all schools are buying in and are doing the advisory model is we understand that all students, all students need to have a champion in the building. And with these advisors, there are going to be at least one person. I hope and pray that there are more than one, but at least one person is their go-to trusted adult. And that will transition from virtual, because, God willing, we'll be back in person soon, back into the building and having that person, in which then we can then know and learn a little bit more of each child and be able to share that. We'll be able to use some of our Wednesday's time to pick the brain of our teachers that have great relationships with kids. Most have great relationships with most kids, and be able to share those strategies with all staff so that all students can feel welcomed and engaged in school.
Yeah, Mike and Jay, I want to thank you so much for those answers. And also, I want to give a shout out to Dr. Clarity. I'm lucky enough to live with a middle school teacher, and so I've heard some really positive conversations around online bullying and making sure young people know how to turn their cameras off and know how to change their background if they don't feel comfortable with peers seeing their home. And so I really appreciate that work and that initial, you know, awareness of how some of the things that can be helpful translate to this environment. Thank you all for doing that.
Jay?
Yeah, Ali, thanks for bringing that up. But we're also clarifying that we don't want our teachers to require kids to turn their cameras on to be counted in attendance. And we recognize that for any of a number of reasons, students may prefer to have the camera off, and it doesn't mean that they're any less engaged in what's going on. And so. And so, thanks for raising that point as well.
Great, thank you all, Ananda?
First, um, thank you so much for the grounding, Lisa, in the beginning of the presentation regarding, uh, highlighting the adaptive nature of this work. Some of us been serving for a little over a year, and I can see like a drastic change and the way we're presenting, the way which we were talking about our students, the way which we're talking about our staff and the work that we're doing. Specifically, the first slide, uh, is a picture of Brianna's third grade teacher. This teacher has, uh, had an immense impact on my daughter's life. In one year, she was able to not only get Brianna, uh, up to great level, but also advance her, uh, making her much better prepared for fourth grade. I see you, Dr. Jenkins, uh, out in the streets in one of the pictures. I see, uh, one of our powers, uh, one of our partners, uh, Yorale Lashley group here. I see in the ways in which we are connecting, uh, virtually with many constituents, I see how the schools, different schools are being highlighted. I see how we're communicating our anti-racist message to both our teachers and our community. I see, um, the love and support that we have, uh, to our teachers and our staff. And I see many different aspects of the work of our students also being highlighted. I, I just wanted to really demonstrate my greatest, uh, gratitude for even the way, uh, all of this has been presented, which I understand it has not been an easy transition, so I really appreciate that. My question, and this can be for anyone that feels compelled to answer, what are some of the things that you definitely want us to let go as far as MMSD culture? And what are some of the things that you want us to hold on as a vision for our future?
Mike?
Ananda, I love that question that you just asked. Um, what do we let go and what do we embrace? Um, I've said this a million times when I, when I was in front of staff and in front of parents, we have to remember the good old days weren't great for everybody. And the good old days was up to five or six years ago. It's hard for change, but if we're going to be intentional, we have to forget the good old days because, um, um, these gaps, they didn't just happen yesterday, and it's going to take a, a while to make that shift in, in our trajectory. We're working on it, but we have to continue to remind ourselves that we have to be very explicit, otherwise it is what it is. And, and we, we can't be, we can't accept that. So thanks for asking that question.
Anybody else want to answer that?
Absolutely.
Okay, go ahead, Tremaine.
I would additionally, I would add on, um, it also speaks to the question that Ali had earlier around the behavior education. It's also how we look at, uh, student and, uh, student and adult interactions. As you think about that dynamic and what a, an adult may experience based off a student behavior, how is that behavior being interpreted and why? And so digging into more of those aspects of, of our work and deeply understanding, is what I'm seeing making me uncomfortable? Or is it, is it def, is it something that's actually a threat or, or, or danger? Those are completely two different dynamics. And I think you continue to ask those questions and ask how are we looking at, uh, our student interactions? How are we looking at the way a student, um, I don't want to use the, we were before, uh, behavior because that, that itself sometimes has a negative condensate, condensation is actually how does a student perform? How does a student articulate? How does a student advocate? And those that are the things that we are learning from this generation are essential to actually over, uh, overcoming the, the racial justice issues that we have. So I ju, I just want, implore us as a, as an entity to continue to ask those type of questions and actually more of why and how are we looking at what our, our students are doing in those authentic ways, uh, instead of like our own personal adult comfort or dis, discomfort.
And I would just add, um, Ananda, to what we need to hold on to is we need to hold on to intentionality and also innovation. So while we are in the middle of a pandemic, this is really an opportunity for us to do things differently, to think about things differently, to think outside of the box, and to collaborate to have different outcomes for our students. And so I think that this, um, that we're, we're getting there. People are coming together, um, schools are working together in partnership, um, to provide, um, better service and, um, again, better outcomes for our kids.
Thank you so much, Carl Lettra, for your final words. I, I really appreciated you framing around the double pandemic, and folks are even saying that we're about on the verge of a triple pandemic with the economic impact, the, all of, all of this, and the opportunity of, um, an uninvited culture change, and how are we going to receive this invitation, right? With an opportunity to really shift the way we've been doing. And I really appreciate, uh, Mike and Tremaine talking about, um, the let go of old patterns. They have traditionally not worked for our students and have, uh, in fact, damaged our trust to our communities and our families. Thank you all for that work.
Thank you, Ananda, great question, um, Flor, um, Savian.
All good, um, so it has been a long, hot swampy summer with a lot of racial trauma, racism and trauma that we have all experienced. And so, um, this presentation and knowing that we have a team of chiefs that are, uh, steeped and well-grounded and anti-race, uh, race, racism in terms of practice and philosophy is really motivating. Um, and we all know that, uh, the old ways of working, um, just won't cut it for our students. And so, um, it is just really heartening to see that we have a, a team that is, uh, being really intentional about big changes we want to see. And I just want to, uh, offer my thank you for that. Um, I do have a technical question in terms of where we're at with scenario planning for the possibility of 4K, um, and, and kindergarten after the first quarter and what types of things we should be looking out for, uh, with those evaluations after the first quarter.
Savian, who, who are you asking that question to, I'm sorry?
Um, I think Lisa or Tremaine or Carl Lettra, um, just with the, um, types of scenario planning, we're looking at, at the possibility of, you know, uh, helping our 4K students get some type of in-person s- social emotional learning after the first quarter.
Um, Savian, thank you, um, for the question. I know that we're working with Andrew and his team to base any decision about opening schools or serving students face-to-face on, um, the information that we're receiving from the health department and the science behind it. Um, and Andrew will be walking our team through a process to sort of think through what the different scenarios are and what might be possible.
Yeah, I will offer that the Madison-Dane County Public Health Threshold are the first thing that we would look at. So they have established a threshold of 54, uh, average daily count of new cases over a two-week average that has to be maintained for a minimum of four weeks. We're currently at a place where we can offer, uh, K1, 2, uh, and some districts may choose to do that in a hybrid or in-person way. So what we will have to do, uh, throughout the rest of the quarter, the rest of the school year is, is keep monitoring those thresholds and make a determination of which would be appropriate, um, for a quarter or two, based on, first of all, community readiness and community support due to, you know, condition of spread, um, per Madison-Dane County Health Guidelines. So that's the very first thing we would do. We would also, uh, want to make sure that our, our own, uh, preparation is in order. So as a system, that we're prepared to have students in a hybrid model or continue with, um, all virtual. And again, those two things happening in concert, but of course, the first being the, the community, um, conditions.
And let me also jump in on this piece, uh, that's a great question. As I've been meeting with, uh, MTI, and we're talking about collaborating on looking at the models and all the information that's coming from the health department together, and then just keeping you informed, but we're going to be meeting weekly in terms of where we are. So when we get ready to make that announcement, we're going to be doing it in concert, uh, with our staff. We'll have a team of individuals, we just had this meeting last Friday, uh, about how we would approach this. And I also, uh, meet with the health department too, listening to them, and we're just going to follow their guidance and making sure that our level of readiness is to their. Thank you, Andrew, for that, because that was also shared at our last meeting, uh, with the superintendents. But that's what we're going to do as we move forward.
Thank you.
All right, um, Christina?
Uh, thank you, thank you all for this presentation. We're halfway through, or more than halfway through the, the staff PD, um, and getting ready, um, to bring students back. And I just want to say that I, I feel like you all have this energy about you, and I'm hoping that it's feeding off what's happening in the schools, um, and I'm really encouraged by that. So, um, thank you for all the work, um, that you're doing. Um, I have a few questions. I wanted to, um, sort of ask, um, building off the question that, that Nikki asked about special education and the, the information that, that, um, John Harper gave about the specifics of going through IEPs, um, and looking at the other list on the intentional focused support. Can you just give a little bit more detail on how like our, um, bilingual resource teachers and other specialists, um, for these other groups of students are, are being used in, in sort of, to make sure that those needs are being met and, and those plans are being followed as we start up? So, um, looking at our English language learners, um, looking at our, our advanced learners, and then, um, how we are also, um, um, doing the engagement around, um, black excellence.
Sure, I can start to speak to some of it. A lot of it, uh, it's an excellent question, is really built into the teaming structures that are in, in play, both in how we scheduled within schools, but also the professional learning opportunities that would be on the, each Wednesday once we get into the full, uh, school session. Where you think about our, our BRTs or BRSs, um, uh, or ESL, cer, cert, and those that are really supporting specific needs is, is so crucial that they are highly involved in the full teaming aspect. So it's not one person carrying that load, it's the full team. And you have a full team of educators around students, supporting those, supporting those needs. And so it's, uh, beyond the professional learning that's going on, that as you previously mentioned, is also those, the intentionality of setting up teams in places supportive of very specific students that began with an identification process of understanding who these students are, what needs that they have, and continue to assess, um, where their current state, as well as any potential gaps that may occur, uh, during, uh, during, during the spring. So all those aspects are, are, are brought together in support, in support of students. But I think just as I'm answering it in the shortest, like the teaming structures are really, what, is what allows that to, to happen with fidelity. And then you had another part to that, sorry.
Yeah, um, in addition to, you know, for English language learners, uh, you know, advanced learners, how, how, just how that's going to work, I guess, um, in support of the classroom teachers, you know, breaking out into small groups? Or is it going to be like, I guess, like functionally, as it was explained for special education, how is it going to work or how are fam, how is it going to be communicated to families? How those, um, that's going to be provided, I guess?
I think one of the positives is, as, as we are attempting to cover some classrooms with Doyle staff, is that we have now placed in-house experts in the building to be able to help with professional development on those Wednesdays, um, uh, to be able to collaborate and share instructional strategies as well as be a model, um, classroom to be able to look at, to see how this is, these practices are done, um, in reality. So that, that is another pos, or positive of this, or that is one positive of it.
I would say, Chris, when it comes to English language learners, our BRS and BRT staff are reaching out to families because the individual plans of service are required under Title III. So they're reaching out and doing language screeners if necessary, particularly with kindergartners and newcomers. Um, so our BRS and BRT staff have been very busy. Um, our advanced learning staff are, um, looking at students as they transition, um, working with teachers, as Tremaine said, on those Wednesdays. Mike and I just had a conversation about that today, that, um, in many ways, the virtual setting that we're in allows people to get into different meetings and spaces much easier than before. So we're feeling good about getting those structures set up for teaming as well and sharing, um, how differentiation strategies can be used, um, in a classroom or how other supports can be provided.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have, I have another question, just really quick. And I just want to thank Mike for highlighting the, the community part of this and the community supports that we are receiving and, and supporting our schools and students and families. And I just wanted, could you give a little bit more detail on the learning pod idea and how, um, our community organizations might be able to support students, um, out of school and in ways, um, that are going to help, um, support the learning in the classroom?
So, we don't have anything, um, set crystal clear. We've had some, um, groups that have offered to be able to work with us, and they're working now with Nichelle, um, and her team to see how we might be able to get this done. Um, uh, being able to provide support after hours, um, whether it's at neighborhood centers, whether it is in Zoom, small, um, groups, um, uh, those are things that we're trying to figure out to be able to help support.
Okay, that's great. I, I just appreciate you for highlighting that, and I know how important that's going to be, um, for us in this virtual model, so thank you.
I just wanted to add as well that we are also working with specific, um, community organizations that are going to focus in on primary students, specifically our kindergarten students, knowing that this is going to be their first introduction to schooling, um, and which is different, right, than how everyone else entered, um, schooling and kindergarten. And so making sure that we have those necessary supports and that we're supporting those foundational skills, um, specifically around literacy, um, and then wraparound supports as well for some of our elementary families. And so we've been doing some outreach, um, to specific organizations. NAACP, the Education Committee, is interested in partnering 100 black men. And so we just want to really be intentional around how we're using community support to uplift the, um, needs and strengthen, um, the instruction that we're able to deliver for students.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, um, Chris Carusi, or Mike, did you have something to respond?
No, it was my hands, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's, uh, Chris, Carusi?
Thank you, I, I want to reiterate all the thanks that have been given to the team, um, for this presentation. This is really helpful, um, it's, I think it's great to have all this information out for, for everybody to hear and to understand better what virtual learning will look like in the fall. Um, I'm especially excited about the mentoring engagement that you guys described. I think that's going to be absolutely critical for making virtual instruction work much better than it did in the spring. So thank you for, for being so thoughtful about that. Um, I have one question that's kind of more of a detailed question about the implementation of virtual learning, and then two questions which are a little bit broader. So I'll start with the detailed question, and that one is, um, I've heard about, um, that scheduling across schools has been kind of inconsistent. Like the middle school level, I heard that some schools are going all day synchronous, and some schools are doing part-day synchronous and part-day asynchronous. And I'm wondering if that was intentional, and, um, if so, why we're doing it that way?
Uh, to clarify, the, there's no, there's not a school that would go all day synchronous, that we, that type of on-screen is, um, interaction for that many hours a day is, would not be healthy for students or, or for, or for staff. Um, and so I think when we're looking at schedules, um, you could see, for example, a place where a staff may, or a s- school may have put synchronous instruction, uh, as a, as a place, but in technically maybe 15 to, you know, 15 to 20 minutes of that time would actually be on, on screen. Uh, from there, students are moving into, uh, potential breakout sessions where they're doing peer-to-peer interaction and collaborative sessions. There's also opportunities for staff to do- There's also opportunities for staff to do small group or some small group interaction with four or five students at a time while the other students are working asynchronously. On a on a project assignment or continue to develop as as critical, critical thinkers. And so we want to be explicit that in 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 understanding that if you look at a day in a totality, which is. Eight thirty all the way to three thirty. We've recommended three hours of less, three hours or less of that is actually synchronous synchronous time. Given that you're you definitely don't want that type of long, long-term engagement over a screen. For that significant amount of time. Doesn't mean students aren't working and continuing to develop as critical thinkers. They're just not directly across across the screen. So I just think it's how. To your point, Chris, I think is how making sure that we're clear on how schedules are interpreted. So when they see synchronous, they understand what that really means. In terms of time, time on task.
Thanks for that. And I think that's really important to communicate to families. So I appreciate that explanation. Kind of building off of that, it, you know, it's very likely that we're going to be either in a virtual environment or some kind of a hybrid environment for the foreseeable future. And, you know, I suspect that this is probably or ideally going to be some kind of an iterative process. Where we do this for a while and then we go back and evaluate and see what's working and what could be going better. I just wondered if you could talk a little bit more about what that process might look like for. Continuing to improve our virtual instruction as we get through a very strange and unpredictable year.
I think that one way that we are looking at this is that the teaching cycle, the great teaching cycle of review and reflecting and revising. That's the beauty of the Wednesdays is that we'll consistently be able to to review or preview and then review. What we've done, getting voice from students, what's working and not, and then being able to improve that as we're going. I agree with you, Chris, that this might be a little bit of a long haul in the virtual and then into the hybrid world. But staff, staff have stepped up with some great strategies and they're sharing them with the other schools. And I think that we've worked, we've worked, we've been extremely intentional at trying to break down some of the. Being consistently inconsistent at schools. We're trying to to really align some of our practices and learn from each other as opposed to being a competitive. Force. So I think that learning from what's working and then highlighting it. And then celebrating that is going to be one of our ways that we get better through the foreseeable future.
Thanks. Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to let you come off. I'll let her go first.
I'll make it quick. I was just going to say additionally, with the increased engagement and feedback from parents, we won't be waiting for. A feedback survey per se, but we'll be getting that continuous feedback so that we know how to improve as well.
And along with that, I think Mike may have said it as well, but just reinforcing the intentionality of student voice, you know, students are. Are, you know, that's who we're serving and their voice is so crucial. But and we have to make this extra effort to. Engage our our black and brown students and our traditionally marginalized students to really get their experiences well and uplift uplift those voices. That is going to be the real kind of a change as we learn how they're experiencing the virtual virtual world.
So my final question actually has to do with teaching. Were our staff are really giving 200%, 500% to make this happen. You know, the amount of time that's going into switching. Their teaching to a virtual platform into, you know, reaching out to families, engaging families while continuing to work on the district's goals of black excellence and educational equity. And on top of that, you know, the accelerated model, which we're looking at, which I think is great, is going to require differentiation. And. That again is something that is probably going to require more staff and more time and more thought on the part of our staff. I'm just wondering what we're doing as a district to support our staff in doing all this, you know, additional difficult work and appreciate them.
So, Chris, I think you ask a really important question. It was one of the reasons that we. Lengthened our welcome back professional learning before the first day of school. I had been meeting weekly with MTI and they shared some feedback with both me and with our calendar committee. About the importance of some new learning on each day. Some time to process and make sense of it and ask questions. And also some time each day to reach out to families. And to begin that initial engagement even very much before the first day of school. And we've been working with Jorge and the chiefs around how to use the Wednesdays in support of building-based work. As a chief suite, we have committed to those Wednesdays in September, keeping those very fluid and flexible so that schools can use those days. To continue to reach out and do some individual work that reflects their own context in how they're implementing virtual learning. And allowing that time for principals to actually be giving feedback to teachers as well. And I know that maybe the chiefs might have a little bit more to more to say about that, but. We felt it was really important to get feedback about how these really important first days work so we can all get grounded in virtual learning.
Now, Chris, the question that you ask is, it just reminds me of over the last. Six or seven days or six days, I suppose, of professional development. I've been able to get into five of the six high schools and eight of the the twelve middle school professional development time. And pop in and listen. And I, and the consistent theme is, you know, sell work for for both the adults and the students. How to be an anti-racist educator as well as supporting your peers. A lot of humor and a lot of time just to sit and talk and to reflect and to. Almost purge. I don't know if that's the right word to use, but just what's on people's minds. And there's been a lot of vulnerability being shown. I sat in with Badger Rock and his teachers there. They were having amazing conversations. And they had no fear or they showed vulnerability by allowing me to listen to them talk about race. I'm saying this is that there is, what I saw is trust. Amongst themselves and building trust with their administrators. For us to be able to then provide supports and do help when we can. I mean, we have a long way to go, Chris. I'll be the first to admit that. But in order for for our adults to feel supported and to heal from what has happened over the last 25 weeks. We have to continue to build that trust. And I heard Dr. Jenkins say this a few minutes ago. But collaboratively, working together on this.
Yeah, would it like to? I'm sorry, Deidre, where you going?
Yeah, thanks, Chris, for the the question. I just wanted to add from an HR perspective. In working with both HR and the professional learning departments. I don't know if you had a chance to hear about the virtual coffee talks that were happening for our new teachers. But it's just one way that the the team is sort of focusing on supporting teachers. In addition to Najah Thompson, who is our recruiter and our employee relations specialist. In HR is really digging into this engagement work this year. And putting together an engagement toolkit, because we understand the importance. Especially during this this virtual time, how are we going to really demonstrate and appreciate? Our teachers and our staff during this time. So all of those things are in the works, but I just wanted to to highlight. Those two things as, you know, coming out of the the HR and the professional learning world.
I would like to weigh in also, Chris, great question. And I think Deidre started going in that area when she said the teachers and the staff. During these times, we have to make sure we give grace and space to everyone. And we continue to talk about the socio-emotional piece. Everyone's having to adjust to the times we're in. And the more that we can just touch one another. Be there in support. And I'm seeing principals during my walk with. Mike and just knowing that the principals are creating that space for staff to be able to talk to one another. We have to have more virtual spaces to check in on one another. And that's with the students. And with all staff in our buildings. And I just say thank you so much to our custodial staff. Social workers and EAs and people like that. We have to continue to. Say thank you to them because they really are out there putting in some work along with our teachers and principals. And thank you to our wonderful. Principals, the way that the chiefs have them engaging everyone. I think, I thank you too, chiefs. I was going to wait to the end to say all of this. Cheerios, but it's a lot of people stepping up in our district right now. And you go across, Chris brought it up, the energy. It's like, wow, you know, it's awesome. It's a great time to be at Madison Metropolitan School District on behalf of children in a team that we're on.
Thank you. Chris, did you have another question?
That's it. Thank you.
Great. I just, I think before we close out here, I just want to thank Dr. Jenkins for really bringing your. Your chiefs in front of us today. And I mean, they bring, they're just phenomenal. And they bring some really just. Experience, knowledge about what's happening in our schools. And I feel it just from this presentation. So. Thank you for elevating their leadership. And again, you are all phenomenal and doing some awesome work. And so thank you for for bringing them in front of us.
You're so welcome. And I would be remiss if I didn't say Lisa's leadership. Lisa's leading all of us. I'm riding her back right now. I'm gonna be honest with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So you have Dr. Jenkins. Do you have another agenda, another presentation for us on grading?
It's the grading presentation. Yes, ma'am. We want to.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on to that.
Thank you, Gloria. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. So in the next part of the presentation, we're going to be sharing the good work that we've been doing over the past seven years. Related to grading. The place we're at today has been really a long time in coming. And it began seven years ago with our high school coursework review. Began with the professional learning around the standards that we did seven years ago. Our ongoing development of department chairs. And also the teams of folks that we have been sending to the Standards Institute over the past two years. Just a reminder, we also completely redid the elementary report cards. Several years ago, and that was no small lift at all. Cindy can share with you what that was like and how that move. Is now really translating into our high school grading practices as well and standards-based reporting. So just want to emphasize that. Throughout this time, we've been doing the work shoulder to shoulder with our teachers and staff. All along the way. And I really want to thank Cindy Green. Cindy has been with us since the beginning on this. She was our curriculum and instruction executive director. When we started this work seven years ago and is now transitioned to. The Executive Director of Secondary Programs and Personalized Pathways. So she and Mike are going to share with you some information about high school grading, where we've been and where we're going. So I will turn it over to Chief Hernandez.
Can you go to the next slide, please? Thank you. So starting with the line, I've been thinking about a lot this lately. Over the past five months. Madison has made several huge decisions centered around equity. We, as an entity, have intentionally kept our black and brown students in the center of all decision-making. Some examples, the food distribution, finding ways to be able to provide food to any student slash family that needed it. Internet. I remember an article on which Chad Wiese was was quoted as saying it's now not a nice to have, it's it's a half to have. Recently, with the decision to remove EROs from schools. Was based upon the social emotional wellbeing, the feelings of our students and to ensure that they're supported. The referendum, the huge asks that are that our board bravely stated are saying that this is what's right. Build the schools. That our students need and to refurbish and update so our students can to to receive what they need. On an equitable stance amongst all our neighboring school districts. And finally. Hiring the first African-American superintendent in our in our school district's history. I say all these things because why are we talking about this grading for equity? I don't need to read these bullets to you, but I'm just going to highlight some. It's promoting equity. It is, it's going to provide consistency for students. They go through a seven-period day. And we're still, it'll it'll release some confusion. Of going, how is my class going to be graded? That we have some consistent practices and and consistent pedagogy as we're working through this. It's going to highlight the learning process. Not all students learn the same way. So now we're taking a time component out and we're just going to be able to allow. Multiple entry points into showing that they're demonstrating that they they understand and so proficiency in the content area. And I believe five years ago, when we started talking about growth mindset. Again, we're modeling what we said, we're showing that there's a growth mindset as opposed to deficit mindset. Saying that that we will help you figure out the way to entry into knowing this material or this content. And we are now thinking about how we are going to be able to support you as opposed to chase down. Can you go to the next slide, please? I said this term a few minutes ago about the great teaching cycle. We've looked at our current grading practices. We reviewed it, we reflected and we revised. Again, one of the things that we needed to ensure is that we needed to ensure that students had the support. And the way that they could show using multiple modalities of how they are able to show that they understand the content. And understand and be able to show proficiency, all with holding high achievement or high expectations. Well, one of the questions that have been asked on this is. Why are we thinking about doing something like this? We've talked to students and one of the questions that Ali asked earlier about what are we changing to try to ensure? That students are engaged and or how might we be able to rethink some of the disengage and some of the misbehaviors that might be occurring? When there was a feeling of hopelessness because multiple zeros meant that there was zero chance that they're going to earn credit. So why go to class? Wander hallways and or disrupting class because there was no opportunity to to be able to get in or earn that credit. Support the learning and high achievements for these students, giving them chances to get in. Can you go to the next one, please? Through this. Consistent communication, consistent feedback. We're asking our teachers to provide at least two grades in IC per week. Grades and feedback to the families. When we looked at our survey data, when Andrew's department set out the survey data. And we had thousands of kids and staff and parents respond. One of the consistent strategies is that we want consistent communication. We want to make sure that our grades, it must reflect the mastery of content, but it's more than just a letter grade. Finally, by making the shift. We are counteracting the instructional biases that reward privilege and or penalize individuals without that privilege. Meaning not everybody has supports at home. And by having, without thinking about these grade shifts and changes and supports that we're providing. We have students that that are penalized because they don't have some of the privileges that we that that my family enjoys. And what a lot of other people's families enjoy. Cindy is going to be going on and going to be speaking a little bit about some of the logistics. But I appreciate you all listening to me about just some of the beliefs and the whys. Cindy?
Thanks, Mike. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you all. Thank you so much. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our history walk and where we've been so far. As Lisa mentioned, we have been doing this work around grading, around standards-based teaching and learning for many, many years. This is not something new. That we just started. Back in 2013, 14, we introduced the Common Core State Standards. And at that time, we knew we needed to make some significant changes. Across our K-12 system in terms of how we deliver instruction and how we assess instruction. And how we are providing feedback to students around what they know and are able to do in every class. From there, we also started to do a lot more course alignment. As we noticed from one school to another. There were very different outcomes in terms of what was happening in a particular course in a high school. English one at one school looked very different from English one at another school. So we spent a lot of time aligning our coursework across our high schools. And then in the last few years, as you know, we introduced the concept of ninth grade on track that we really leveraged. that we really leveraged from University of Chicago's Consortium on School Reform and their freshman on track. And from there, we continue to uncover inconsistent grading practices and inconsistent delivery of that feedback to students and families. So we started to continue to make shifts. We aligned and created some guiding principles that we felt were fundamental to what we were doing in our high schools. And I would say over the last two years, we continually made more significant shifts around grading practices across schools, within schools, teacher teams, uh, to this past school year where we really started to have some early adopters around some of the shifts that I'm going to discuss with you tonight. Barb, could you go to the next slide, please? Throughout this process, I would say that we have had strong collaboration across all of our schools. I feel like it is definitely a model of some of the work where we've done the work with our schools, not to our schools. And so for the last two years, we've had what we call our cross-functional grading group that's comprised of central office staff, it has our school assistant principals, it has ninth grade on track coordinators, and it has coaches. We've also been working very closely with our building principals, our instructional coaches and our teachers throughout this process to begin to think about what shifts we wanna make and what the timeline is for that shift. At all four of our comprehensive high schools, our schools have been doing book studies around a book called Grading for Equity as well as another book called The Repair Kit by Ken O'Connor. And they've been, uh, doing their own learning along the way. Last year through professional development, our schools led professional development around grading. And then this year, as they've started Welcome Back, have continued that work. So we've really been working together to think about that. We are also working with our face department and they've been seeking input from our Latinx families and our black families as well. Could you go to the next slide? So what is our long-term vision for grading? Uh, first of all, it's not just about grading, it's about the inputs, it's about the instructional delivery as well as the outputs. And as Lisa said, we at K-8 already have a standards-based approach to grading. At K-5, we adjusted it a few years ago. Middle school has been a standards base and we've really been strengthening the instruction side of that and the assessment for students. And at high school, now we want to make sure that we have an aligned system, K-12. We wanna make sure that students are accessing grade level standards and in an accurate and equitable manner. We also wanna make sure that its teachers are teaching to the standards and students are able to be able to receive feedback on how they're mastering the knowledge and skills of that standard. Could you go to the next slide? Thanks Barb. And so with that, over the next few years, we believe that our approach is to continue to move to a more standards-based instruction and grading approach at high school. We have a few, um, key changes that we believe are part of this change process that we're working on and feel that it will continue, uh, to better serve our students and families who are the end user of this. Um, those are kind of focusing on rolling semester grades, consistent gradebook setups, our equal interval grading scale, and ultimately getting to standards-based instruction and grading. We have a tentative timeline and I say tentative intentionally. Uh, the reason why I say tentative is that, as Mike said and as Lisa said, we are constantly in this continuous improvement cycle and we like to reflect and adjust and adjust as needed based on what we are learning along the way. So right now, we believe by potentially 22, 23, we will have our high schools doing full standards-based instruction and grading. However, we know over the next two years, we're gonna really be paying attention to what we are learning, uh, both from our teachers, what we're hearing from our students and families, to adjust accordingly. That means that timeline could accelerate or that timeline could slow down based on what we're continuously learning. So the first change that we're making, and I'll just talk about this quickly, is what we call rolling semester grades. But what is a rolling semester grade? In essence, if you see in the red, we used to have an old practice at high school where we had equal weights between quarter one and quarter two and a final exam at the end that was worth 10%. What we were seeing is this kind of arbitrary deadline in the middle of the semester that sometimes had unequal number of assessments, uh, both formative and summative in nature, uh, created disproportionate, um, uh, grades for students that potentially created disproportionate outcomes for our students at the end of the semester. For example, in quarter one, a student could have received a D and only had two assessments. And then in quarter two, might have received a B and had 15 assessments, yet both of those quarters were weighted equally. So what we have decided to do is remove what I would call that artificial or arbitrary kind of barrier in between that and have one rolling semester grade that is equal to 100%. We do not transcript or give credit until the end of the semester anyways. So we believe that students should have the entire semester to demonstrate their knowledge and skills of that course and not be held to these unequal, um, uh, moments in time that the former used to do. Could you go to the next slide, please?
Yeah, one of the positives on this is that, um, teachers no longer are gonna have to post the grades at the end of the, or quarter. Um, however, this now also shows that we have a focus on the learning process again, as I mentioned before. It also, it's going to highlight with clear, consistent communication. Um, can you go to the next slide? With clear, consistent communication of these weekly or these every four-week progress reports, um, with the inputs into Infinite Campus, with their advisors contacting, um, families and students, talking to how students are doing. There's not, it's gonna take the surprise component out. Everybody's gonna be using IC, everybody is gonna be inputting grades. It's, it's gonna be, the learning process is gonna be the semester-wide. We'll know if we need a little bit of catch-up or additional supports as opposed to that mad rush a week before the semester or the quarter ends and we're trying to cram everything in.
I would just add to that before you go to the next slide, Barb, is that we know that IC and grades are one of our main forms of communication to students and families. So you can see on this slide that we're still providing those same updates to families, but instead it's a, it's a moment in time, progress along the way versus a locked-in grade that used to be that potentially had a negative impact on students. Thanks for that, Barb. So the next kind of, uh, move that we're making at the high school level is to have what we call a consistent gradebook setup. And this is really something that happens on the backend, but also something that is critically important to our ongoing communication to students and families. I think Mike said it in the beginning, consistency is so important. And we know adolescent brains need clear and consistent communication on a regular basis. Research tells us that, we have learned that through our work of ninth grade on track. Our former gradebooks were set up in a way that it was a little bit of choose your own adventure by teacher, not even by course. So what we have done is we've moved to set up our gradebooks in a consistent way across all of our high schools for all of our courses. Meaning that teachers don't have to set up their gradebooks anymore at the beginning of the year. We've removed that step for them and we've set them up for every teacher. And every teacher will have a consistent gradebook setup where it's 70% summative and 30% formative. We know that the ultimate goal is students demonstrating knowledge and skills of standards, which is really the work of summative assessments and formatives are just the progress checks along the way. So we're continuously trying to move more to that approach where it is about students showing and demonstrating the mastery of standards. We also believe this setup is going to provide tons of consistency for both students and families. Students no longer need to determine how my grades are being calculated in one class to the other. Families no longer need to try and make sense of potentially seven different gradebook setups that they were receiving across the student's day. All of the gradebooks will be set up consistently with the exact same categories and the same weights. As I mentioned before, we also feel like this is much easier for teachers and have already heard a ton of praise from teachers saying, "Thank you, because it takes me so long to set up my gradebook for all of my classes." Could you go to the next slide, please? I said this already, but in addition to having a choose your own adventure and hundreds of different gradebook setups along the way for students and families to make sense of, we also recognize that there were errors in gradebook setups where sometimes a gradebook was not even set up to 100%. We know that in itself creates huge issues for students in terms of being able to demonstrate the knowledge and skills of a particular course. Um, and again, just to reiterate, families and students will no longer have to navigate many different gradebook setups. There will be consistency across the board. Last shift is what we call an equal interval grading scale. Could you go to the next slide, Barb? So an equal interval grading scale is making a shift from our current grading scale, which is worth 100% or 100 points. In the current grading scale that was set up back in the Industrial Revolution, you actually had more opportunity for failure than you did for passing. There were 59 points for a student to fail, yet there was only 41 points for a student to pass. We know through our work with the University of Chicago's Consortium for School Reform as well as work that we've studied across the nation around failures. We know failures are not motivators to students. And we know as a learning organization, our job is about teaching and learning, not about failing students. So over the last two years, as we've really dug into grading, we've recognized that our kind of old way of, um, a traditional grading scale was not helping students in the fact that kids again had more of an opportunity to fail than to pass. Could you go to the next slide, please? And we feel that because there are so many points with this 100-point range, that it's more accurate and even more rigorous scale. We know that the failures, uh, give a small, false sense of accuracy. We know that that doesn't motivate students to continue to engage in learning. And we know, as I mentioned before, that it's disproportionately, um, within this scale, uh, the heavy Fs here. Uh, grading accuracy lies within the measure and not within the scale, and that's what we're really trying to focus on. We also know that our current grading scale as is, is still traditional in the A through a D. We know that this 59 points is definitely not a fair or balanced outcome for students. And I think when you hear about 59 points for an F and nothing near that to pass the class, it seems like, well, that's not rocket science, pretty, makes a lot of sense, right? Um, we also know that we wanna take steps towards the full change to standards-based grading. And we believe that this is one of those steps towards standards-based grading. This is not necessarily our ultimate or end goal. Could you go to the next slide, please? So this scale right here and this plan is our plan for the current year, not necessarily where we wanna end in our final destination. What you'll see here is that an A through a D, both in the equal interval grading scale as well as in the former traditional 100-point scale, A through a D does not change. Students still have that same opportunity or that same number of points to earn an A through a D. Again, making incremental changes to our future ultimate goal. What we have done is shifted to have that equal opportunity for an F as well. I think there's some misconceptions and some myths out there that's saying we are lowering rigor. We are lessening it, we're reducing our expectations for students. And by no means aren't we doing that. We have very high expectations for our students. We still believe in students being able to demonstrate mastery through an A, a B, a C or a D. But what we don't believe is accurate, what we don't believe is right and we don't believe is the way we wanna move forward is that students should have 59 points for an F. What we've seen is that when students receive anything lower than a 50% on assignments, it is very difficult for that student to come out of that F and still pass the course. Yet we know students have an entire semester to be able to demonstrate mastery and they should be able to do that through multiple modes and multiple opportunities. When we receive, uh, Fs or we give students zeros, it's very difficult for them to come out of that. I'm gonna show an example on the next slide. So on the next slide, what you are going to see here is a student in our traditional grading scale that had three assignments. For two of those assignments, they received an 85% or 85 points. They received Bs. So the student's doing pretty well, right? Student is being able to show mastery of the standards based on those two assignments. That third assignment, based on the standards that are being assessed, the student receives a zero. That calculation creates their overall grade thus far to an F. I think we would argue that the student just demonstrated for two of those assignments that they actually knew what was happening in terms of the knowledge and skills and only one assignment that they did not, yet overall were saying you're failing and you have failed. If you could click again, Barb, please? In our second example, where we have an equal interval grading scale, really thinking about what an F means and really thinking about what we are trying to say to our students, the student again in assignment one and two demonstrated, uh, mastery of those standards. They received Bs and 85%. Assignment three, the student didn't do so well on that assignment. However, when we do the calculation here based on an F having that equal number of points at a 50%, the student is at a C. So the student is still passing. We know that the student has learned some of the knowledge and skills and the content and they are still on track to pass the class. We don't believe that this is again lowering the bar. We believe that this is creating the opportunities for students to continue to stay in the game. We know that if a student does not stay on track in ninth grade, the predictability rate of them graduating on time is less than one in four. So we want our students to stay in the game, to continuously learn with us and also have that fail-forward growth mindset that we hold true as MMSD graduate vision. Um, and to be able to model that as well. Could you go to the next slide, please? So what this shows is kind of summing up what I just talked about. What's the same and what is new? The same is that our overall grading scale for an A through a D stays the same, both at the assignment level and at the output set of final grades that a student would receive. What is different is where that F falls and what no longer exists in our grading scale. Students still can receive an F, but that F now has the same equal points, 10 points, where a student can still fail an assignment or fail a course. What we have taken away is that disproportionate number of points that an F used to allow, and this no longer exists. Could you go to the next slide, please? But what are some of our next phases or next steps? I've talked about this kind of long-term goal around standards-based grading and instruction. We know, Lisa mentioned, we've sent people to the Standards Institute. We adopted the standards in 13, 14. We're continuously using our iterative process to reflect and adjust on how we're doing towards meeting those standards. We know in order for students to be college and career, they must have mastered the standards that we hold tight to as a district. So we want to continue to work towards full standards-based instruction and standards-based grading. That is nothing that happens overnight. There is a ton of teacher planning, teacher learning, teacher designing and development of rubrics to make sure that we get to that place. So that we will spend the next few years continuing to move towards what our end goal is of standards-based instruction and grading. Right here on this slide, it just highlights a little bit of what traditional grading is versus standards-based grading. Standards-based grading really provides students with feedback on how they're doing towards meeting those standards. And why make that change? Again, you've heard me say, "Why make that change?" Because standards-based grading and instruction to, truly demonstrates for students, families and teachers what it is that students need to know and be able to do, feedback on how they're doing towards the mastery of that and the opportunities to redo. We have been in constant communication with our post-secondary institutions, both locally and nationally, to continue to learn from them what changes they're making at the post-secondary level around, um, grading, around acceptance into schools and how we can ensure that we are in alignment with what post-secondary institutions desire and where they are. There is a lot of work at the post-secondary level and thinking about entrance criteria and thinking about more of a portfolio approach and thinking about more of a portfolio approach for students to enter into post-secondary. So there's a lot of exciting work that's not only happening at the K-12 sector, but also happening post-secondary. So we are constantly in conversation to make sure that our shifts align with where our students are going after they leave us. We also believe that it is the best way to provide feedback and provide ongoing information to our students and families around their progress and how they're doing towards mastery of courses, and ultimately how they're doing towards becoming college and career and community-ready. Last, I would say that we have spent years kind of studying this. It isn't something that we just started overnight. What we did is we provided a little bit of research and scholarship um that was in your uh board materials as well. And I would also say that we have also been paying attention to a lot of school districts across the nation that have made significant shifts to their grading and instructional approach as well. I'll pause there for Mike to chime in if he wants to add anything to what I've said.
No, I think that you're really comprehensive on this. Um, I just want to highlight the and thank all the the teachers, the instructional coaches, and the principals that were involved in this work over the last several years. Um, it is, this is, it's exciting.
So Gloria, I guess with that, unless Lisa has anything else to chime in, we can pause and see if there's questions at this time.
Okay, um, any questions from the board? Ananda?
Nikki had her hand up. Go ahead, Nikki.
Um, sure. Cindy, my quick uh questions are, one, on IEPs and disability, when we eventually do portfolio, how are we going to make sure that the learning is equal and that mastery is shown? Because sometimes on some projects we can do, sometimes we can't. I'm afraid that that may not translate as well in person. And my second question is that, I know you've been working for years on this, don't get me wrong. And I know the board spoke it up, but this, my question is, did we ever consider putting this on the agenda for a vote? I'm just curious. I'm not insulting. I'm not being offensive. I just truly am curious.
Sure. So I'll answer the first one in terms of portfolio. So as a system, we haven't moved necessarily towards portfolio as our final approach for grading. What I've said is that many districts across the nation do that. We know we moved that way for Capitol High. We still are working with letter grades. We are still using rubrics to assess students' mastery. And I'm not exactly sure where we will end in terms of standards-based grading and instruction. There's many different models out there uh for us to consider, and I think that's part of what we're going to learn over the next few years, is how this step towards that is working and where we might want to go. I'll answer quickly the second one, and then I'll turn it over to see if Mike wants to say anything. We don't have a policy around grading, so we've been providing updates to the board for many years around that. So I would say from my perspective, I didn't think there was a a need for a vote, knowing that we actually don't have a a policy in place for grading. Mike or Lisa, I don't know if you want to add to that.
Well, that's exactly what I was going to say. Um, Cindy, is to my knowledge, there is no board policy on grading. Um, I'm, I don't think I'm wrong, but.
Mike, let me uh, I'll chime in on that. Note, Cindy, you answered it uh correctly. There isn't a board policy, uh, but like anything else, everything is about process and communication, and this has been going on for six years. Now, actually, across the nation, individuals are talking about status-based grade grading based upon the various inconsistencies, the equity issues. And in the presentation, you you said quite a bit about it as a national discussion. But uh, for the most part, in our district right now, we don't have a policy on it. So it wouldn't have been Nikki uh coming to the board for a vote. It's just more for information. But this process, I just remind everybody, it's been continuing, and uh, and it's not as a result of COVID-19. Uh, it's been across the country. Uh, many districts have engaged in discussions about grading disparities and what is it going to be to keep students engaged and learning. And we've seen across the country these exacerbating deficits between grading and outcomes, and students uh totally disengaged from school and dropping out because they just feel like they can't keep up. I think Cindy, you hit uh um the point in terms of um individuals having, there are myths out there in terms of what does it do in terms of a grading floor, in terms of lowering expectations. There is literature, she put in a pen uh appendix there, that some do argue for it, some argue against it. And as a district, we have to just say, where do we wind up in terms of the mission and vision that we have in terms of trying to engage as many students as we can, as we can, and keep them engaged in uh learning? So Cindy, nice job. That was a lot of information. I'm sorry, board members, I know that. Uh, but we could definitely, we could continue to have this discussion as we're trying to move forward. And we will, I'll tell you, bring this back for more and more discussion, because this is a serious issue that's on a national level about students uh and their uh, the barriers we have up that we continue to have up, and we write students off at a certain point, and we don't get them back.
I appreciate, I appreciate that. Can I just say one thing that I promise I won't? Uh, Chair, may I please say one thing really quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just, I was mistaken because I thought there was a policy because of the uh statute one twenty point twelve that says the board had the power to discuss um education materials and reading materials and means and modes of instruction. I must have misread that. I apologize.
No pressure. No, no, that was a great uh question, and.
Yep. Thank you, Nikki. Uh, Ananda, go ahead.
First of all, like, my mind is blown uh by the amount of work and research uh uh from the team, in particular, Mike and Cindy, for relaying this information to us. Um, also extremely um appreciative, the also the honing into some some root causes of how our students disengage and not motivated. Because I have one of those students at home um that, you know, as soon as she gets the first D or even a C, we're done for the semester. We're done for the quarter. And I was like, good luck next quarter kind of situation. It's really frustrating. So I really appreciate that. Um, I I have two, uh, actually a couple of comments. One, what are you all thinking around um what to do with particular um sophomores, juniors, and seniors as well? Particularly juniors and seniors, upcoming junior and seniors this year that lost sort of the, you know, the the grading, the no pass, and then now have, you know, a short period of time to kind of make up, and then it will be in this transition. So there will be, there will be some, still some adjustment uh for them. Uh, I'm very concerned with our high school students and in my high school student as well of what are, what are some of our, what are we doing for this year to support them? Uh, since it's likely that we'll be in a really strange and unusual year and rolling out something very new and progressive.
Are you, are you asking like social emotional supports?
No, no, in a, in regards to grades in particular.
Yeah, so I can start, Ananda, and then Mike and Lisa, feel free to chime in. I think it goes back to what we've said said all along around our instructional continuity plan and this idea of acceleration versus remediation. At the high school level, I would say last spring, we spent a ton of time having teachers thinkly think deeply about what is the knowledge and skills essential for this course. I think that we have made a lot of strides at high school in getting teachers to really think about the transferable skills versus the content that they teach, right? Our high school teachers, they love their content, and they want to teach every single event along the way and every single minor detail that students may or may not need to know to be able to master that content and the transferable skills. So in the spring, we really had our teachers think about that. We had them look at their scopes. We had them focus on what we say are focus standards around what are the essentials of this course? And what are the things that we want to go deep into, especially around disciplinary literacy, critical thinking, reading and writing? And how are those the transferable things that students are going to need? I would say in addition to that, that graduate vision for us is so key, especially as kids are about to leave us and go on to life after high school in terms of interpersonal skills, cultural competence, growth mindset. So we also really had them think about that as well and how they could teach those pieces. The last thing I would say is we carried that into this fall to have teachers really thinking about that while knowing that there is going to be some essential content that students did not have. And where Mike talked about this idea of um our advisors at the high school level, those people are serving kind of a dual role. One, we have outside tutors that will be supporting from the community. But those advisors are going to not only be providing kind of social emotional support, but they will be helping as a kind of academic tutor for students. Easton LaFala did that last spring, and we saw some really great growth from our students based on that. So those are just a few things that I would say. And Ananda, I hear you with a parent of a high schooler as well, like knowing that we only have very short amounts of time left with our students. How can we really get clear on what they need to know and be able to do?
And I think also from one of your questions is, um, the last thirteen weeks of school, uh, we collectively made a decision to use pass, no, or pass.
Fail, that's fail.
No, pass, pass, but I'm a do no harm on. And and speaking to students um through summer that attended summer school, speaking to students through the year. Um, you know, hindsight's twenty-twenty, and I don't say that lightly. Um, we were concerned about social emotional supports for both the adults and the students. Um, I don't question that at all. I think that um during that time of the unknown, that was, that was important to ensure. I remember sitting in an interview and saying, we need to give the adults grace, the students grace on this because everybody's learning something new. I'm out. We've gone through the summer knowing we're going to be doing grades. We've been talking with staff. We're doing grades and we're communicating with students right now that we're doing grades. I think it's going to be um clear and consistent communication um on what and how. But one of the positives on this, and I know that Cindy and I both have said this, is um the clear and consistent communication. It's going to be clear and consistent from class to class and from building to building. Um, because you and I both know mobility is a major factor as well. And through that mobility, um, there's a disproportionate number of students, black and brown students that are mobile. And when you go to system to system to system, um, that's where we have dropouts and disengaged students that roam. And so we're hoping, again, taking some of these variables out, we'll be able to support our students that way.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, just a couple of pieces of feedback. Yes, my daughter really enjoyed the advisor call last week. She was extremely excited in ways that I was surprised. And then two, appreciate the addressing the the sort of end of the quarter surprise, your student has failed. Uh, I was never understood the how that was possible. Uh, I think it will be a culture shift from from a parent perspective too, because I think a lot of parents don't know that that, you know, how to even navigate that. And like when you have a high schooler, it's not a lot of, like, sometimes they don't understand themselves, what's happening, and it's different for each class, so trying to catch, you know, trying to keep up. Uh, so just a couple of sort of, you know, feedback and just like warning as we're moving into this really strange year where we have a very different way to contact our families in particular, like how to make sure that that communication is there and people understand uh our changes and the imperative of those changes to be happening. So thank you both. I, I don't have any more comments for now. Cindy, were you gonna say something?
Yeah, I would just say, Ananda, I hear you. We created a really strong communication plan for our families that will start uh as students, as soon as students come back. And we've been working real closely with Nichelle and Angela from her team on that, and even just starting with what are some of the things you can anticipate. Um, and I think that will be ongoing throughout the year as we hear from families and as families tell us, I still am confused or I still don't understand. But that is something we've been thinking about. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Cindy. And as someone that is not afraid to be vulnerable uh and who has also multiple educational degrees, I would not be able to explain, I can parrot what you all said about the ratings. I cannot explain what was before, or I can understand the impact and what is coming, you know, like what is happening now. Like from a, you know, elevator speech perspective, I don't think I can articulate uh that. So if that's not happening in this meeting, that's fine, but just know that like, it's a, it's definitely has stretched my my capacity to understand. But I, so far from what I'm seeing, it's um, it's, it sounds very promising.
Ananda, we will round back to this and the instructional work group or superintendent's report presentation. So never fear, we're going to come back to this and um talk through it again.
Lisa.
Okay, great. Julia?
Okay, thank you. Um, first off, I just want to say I'm really glad about the shift to rolling semester grading. Um, I think that's a good move, and I'm, I thank you for your work in that. Um, I wasn't around for any previous discussions on the equal interval or no grading scale. So I do have some questions for um Ms. Green or Mr. Hernandez about that. So first, I was just wondering, in a district where this was implemented previously, um, the failure rate for students obviously dropped, which is good, but uh so did the rate of students earning As and Bs in upper-level classes, and that was pretty significant. Um, so teachers reported that students' motivation um had eroded, and I was just wondering if that was a concern at all for the administration?
Well, I I can speak in a little bit. Um, you were a little bit muffled, so I I want to make sure I know that what you asked is, part of it was um engagement of students if if the grades were inflated or if the grades were deflated?
Sorry, I can just say it again. Can you hear me better now?
Yeah, I I brought the speaker right here, so I can.
All right. Um, I, so in a district where this was previously implemented, um, failure went down, but so did rates of students earning As and Bs in upper-level classes. Um, and teachers found that it had eroded some students' motivations. So I was wondering if that's a concern at all and how the district might address that.
Okay, great question. I know that um several schools have have used this and have through the the year, but as well as just went back and looked at their grades to see how it might have affected. Most recently, um, a teacher at West High School is providing some professional development and used um his class. He didn't use the strategy, and he actually wasn't necessarily a fan of it. But over the summer, reading and understanding, he went back and looked at last year's grades, right? Um, the the trend that we see, whether we're talking east algebra or we're talking west chemistry, is it did not actually inflate the number As and Bs. It did, however, bring up um a few of the Fs. And the reason being on this is that it brought some, took some of the zeros and brought it them up to fifties, and it raised it a little bit. But here's the interesting part of it. It was that, and again, this is something that we saw when we talked to summer school students. And this is something we talked when we talked to students that were in the transition academies or microschools as well, is that when the the teacher asked, there were students that had one, two, or three Fs, and they felt that they were not going to be able to get those up, they just stopped coming. And those, those were some of the Fs that that continue to stay in those classes. Um, and so we've been looking at these, and we have other teachers now are looking at their gradebooks just to see if that trend is is consistent as well.
I, I'll also just add in there a little, Julia. Um, many districts across the nation have shifted their entire grading scale as they've moved to an equal interval grading scale. And I would say we grappled with about three or four different grading scales, and we decided as a collective to keep the grading scale for an A through D consistent now and only change that fifty-nine points for an F so that students that were earning As before should still be earning As, students that were earning Bs should still be earning Bs. We didn't feel that we were ready for kind of um fully going like this and blowing up the full grading scale and making those shifts because we also simultaneously have to work on that instructional delivery and assessing standards through the way we deliver instruction. So I think that some of the references you're making are in terms of where they've done some other significant shifts. And for us, it's just one phase and kind of where we may go with that.
Thank you. Um, I had another question. So um, all Madison teachers that I've had in the past have chosen to give opportunity to make up late work or late assignments or sometimes even redo tests for like partial or full credit. Though could either, could encouraging teachers to allow makeups for credit? Or like some districts have mandated um that you have a minimum fifty percent if a reasonable attempt is made on the assignment? Would that achieve, achieve the same goals as just removing the zero? Or is there a reason specifically like why you went to get rid of the F, basically?
Yeah, so I'll start, and then Mike, feel free to chime in. So one, we don't have a consistent practice right now in terms of teachers allowing to have students make up or redo. That's one of the shifts that we've been working on for the last few years. And it's great to hear that all of your teachers have done that. I would say a. I would say across a student's day, they have had very inconsistent practices in terms of what's allowed and what's not. So that's one of the things we want to standardize. And two, I want to go back and just reemphasize this idea of a zero and this idea of fifty-nine points for an F. Yet nowhere near that same number of points for students to demonstrate passing. And so for us, the shift in taking away a zero, which tanks students, sometimes you cannot come out of a zero. Even mathematically, in any way you try, you cannot come up from a zero. We want students to be able to see us as a learning organization. And we want our students to be in this continuous improvement cycle as well. And so one way to do that is just to create an equal number of points that still allows students to fail forward. And to come out of that and to master the content and the skills. So that is where we are at. I don't think just this idea of redoing without removing a zero. And that kind of disproportionate number of opportunities in an F would achieve the same goal.
Just to go along with that is sometimes there's confusion when we use grades as punitive measures as well. Um an example being somebody who cheated. Um do they deserve a zero or do they deserve an F? Because sometimes the if somebody cheats, there's a root cause to that. Right? So we need to look at this. And if we look at a deficit mindset, hey, I'm coming down as hard as I can, you get a zero or an F. I say deficit mindset on here is a student might have had something that they needed to do and they didn't have to a chance to study. Or complete the homework. And so knowing that they're going to either get a zero or take the chance. They decided to take the chance. I think the root cause um from this is we need to figure out how we can provide. We need to figure out. Hello?
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, I hear.
I know it's coming from your end, Gloria. I just got to mute.
So we need to figure out the root cause of of the why. Um I think there's a hang up on on being able to fail somebody. Um you're still, there'll still be, you know, people will still be able to fail a student. But it'll be with the fifty percent F as opposed to a a zero F.
I mean, do you think that students would be less likely to make up their work or try to relearn content if it was already a fifty percent?
I think that particular students, if we're being extremely um intentional on this. I think that students are gonna realize that as we work out through maturity as well. That they they still have a chance to get engaged and pass the class. As opposed to the first two, three weeks, we see a few a few zeros. I mean, we're looking at it in two different senses, right? I'm looking at there are students that are intrinsically motivated. Um earlier, when I talked about the privileges, they have privileges of parents and or people supporting them, and we have some that don't. And that's unfortunate, but it's a reality. And so we're taking one of those variables out and we're not going to penalize somebody for not having that privilege.
Cut out for a minute there, but I think I got the gist of what you're saying. I have other questions. Sorry to take up more time, but um. So some kind of going along with that idea of privilege, there's kind of dangers and subjective grading as well. And some research has found that educators in schools with a no-zero policy. Um give higher grades to students who are shown, who they believe are putting in more effort. Um and I'm kind of concerned that would make grading more subjective or discouraging to students who aren't doing as well. So could you speak to that at all?
So I can start and then Mike, you want to chime in? So I think this is why we want to move to standard spaced instruction and grading overall. When teachers have rubrics and the rubrics are very clear in terms of what students need to know, be able to do and demonstrate. In order to master the standards, there is no subjectivity in it, right? We're taking some of that subjectivity out. I would say that this kind of phase along the way is still imperfect. Because we are still using percents and letter grades and we haven't moved to the full standards-based approach. Many of our teachers use rubrics, many of our teachers use points. And those points are able to calculate on the back end to that percent. And so we're getting closer to that, and that has been six years of work. As Lisa said, we just recently sent people to the Standards Institute and DPI just made some shifts to their standards again. So when we can fully get to that place where we show students in advance, this is what it means to meet the standards. Here is the rubric, there is no guessing game. I think we will be even closer to what you're getting at, Julia, and I think this is one step to that.
Yeah, and I agree with the subjectivity. When we hit the standards. As as I mentioned earlier, you have multiple entry points to show proficiency in. And so that takes some of that subjectivity out. But we also know with grading, um participation is code for behavior. Um if they're if they're actively engaged, if they're participating or if they're not necessarily um engaged in class. That can be a difference between getting full points of participation and getting zero points for participation. And that's a way to to create subjectivity as well. But if we're talking about um being able to show. Uh or demonstrate some proficiency in multiple different ways, that can take out that um subjectivity as well. Dr. Jenkins?
Yes, no, I was just gonna say to Chair Reyes and to the rest of the board members, I appreciate all the questions. We're gonna be bringing this back. This isn't the end of this. And uh at this particular point, we have several other items on the agenda. I definitely think that we could move this. And if there are any other questions, you can submit those in and uh we definitely will respond to those. But tonight was intended to give you an overview because we're moving this great piece forward. So if we could at this point, we could just end this particular presentation and thank you to those who are presenting, uh unless the board wishes differently.
Thanks for your answers.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. I agree. I think um yeah, we've been two, two hours into the superintendent's report. Um I will take in one more person. I don't, I don't see, I didn't see any other hands up. Chris Gomishmit, um if you could ask your questions all at once.
I think I think Ali had her hand up, so I don't want to interrupt there. I know she was hoping to ask.
That's okay.
My my question, my question is just around the metrics that we're using to make to determine if what the changes that we're making are effective. So if you could share with us, yeah, however you're going to share that, um the metrics that we're using to. Um tell that this these changes are helping students um stay more engaged in school. And that they're increasing their mastery and learning um along the way and not just increasing their GPA. I think that would be helpful for us to understand.
Well, I can start. I think we're going to use the same metrics that we have in place in our strategic framework and the same metrics we've used in the past. I think in addition to that, in the research has told us kind of what we should be paying attention to and why we're making these changes. So that's where we are initially in terms of metrics for that. I think the other thing we will do obviously is qualitatively along the way in our reflect and adjust process. So let me know if you want to add anything to that.
Great, thank you.
I also want to say part of, one of the metrics we would look at is attendance. And looking at some of the trend data of students from last year to this year on engagement and or disengagement of attending classes.
Thank you.
All right. Great presentation. Thank you. Thank you all. This was very informative. Um as Dr. Jenkins said, that um we um will come back to this uh topic again. Uh to have another conversation um and update on how we're doing. Uh so next item on the agenda is. Did somebody have something before I move on? Okay. Is report on items that proceeded through the instruction work group, Ananda.
Thank you, President Reyes. Uh we covered um some significant shifts on Title IX policy. Uh from a national level, we will, Eric Keston is going to be bringing uh this item back to us later. This year, once we have a a little bit more update. We uh also had a really rich and extremely important convers- conversation around the use of restraint and seclusion. It's our policy forty-two twenty, forty-two twenty-one. And uh our demonstration provided some uh much needed revision for that policy. Uh we also made uh an effort to at every instruction work group, starting the that committee. With an update on virtual learning. So we were able to uh to review data from what we had so far. Uh available to us, some some early learnings from our team in regards to the virtual learning. And what was done, what was being done in preparation for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one is clear. At our next work group meeting, uh we will revisit the virtual learning and giving more updates. And we'll discuss any other DPI waiver. Thank you, President Gloria.
Great, thank you. Um next is a report on items that proceeded through the operations work group.
Thanks, Gloria. So the operations work group did not meet in August. However, um on the agenda tonight, we're going to be taking up some business that we began in July. Um specifically, we're going to be voting on a resolution to authorize temporary borrowing to maintain district operations. Um this is something we do every year to maintain cash flow between the gap between the beginning of the school year. And the time when we get most of our revenues, which is at the beginning of the calendar year. So um our next meeting is September fourteenth. And the possible agenda items for that meeting include the twenty twenty twenty-one budget. Um an update on operations during virtual learning and a potential building purchase for the district.
Great, thank you, Chris. Uh next item is uh our action items that proceeded through the instruction work group. And um that is the the policy four-two-two-one. I move that the Board of Education approve the revisions to board policy four-two-two-one. Use of restraint and and or seclusion as set forth in the documents prepared for the regular meeting dated August thirty-first, twenty twenty, effective immediately. And Nikki, second?
Yes, I'm just so uh second and I'm so pleased that we got to do this.
Yes, thank you. All right, any discussion? All right, um Julia, your advisory vote? Aye, all those in favor? Aye, show of hands? Okay. Motion passes. Next item. Is action items that proceeded through the operations work group held July thirteenth, uh twenty twenty. And I move that the Board of Education award the low bidders for the tax revenue anticipation note to Morgan Stanley and Company LLC. And Citigroup Global Markets Inc. for a total of seventy million. At a net interest cost of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-one, net interest rate of point two-three-four percent. You got a second?
Second, Chris.
Chris Curusi, second? Any discussion? Okay, Julia, your advisory vote? Aye, all those in favor? Aye? Show of hands? Thank you. Unanimous, uh motion passes. Now on to the consent agenda. I move that the Board of Education adopt and approve all the motions set forth in the sec- in in section ten. Of the electronic agenda prepared for the August thirty-first, twenty twenty, regular school board meeting, exactly as said motions are written. By voting affirmatively on this motion, a board member expresses his or her affirmative vote on each of the motions consolidated. Hereby, subject to any expenses, in any express separations that have been made by any member of the school board. Can you get a second? Sevian, second? Okay, um discussion, anything, any items? Separations? Uh Ananda?
I am so sorry. I'm like really having a hard time with the screen right now and I don't know where, I can't find the. The Rimrock School item.
It's under other business. It's not under the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Chris Curusi?
Um I would like to pull ten point five, ten point twelve, and ten point fifteen.
Okay, any other separations? Okay, we are voting on um all the items on the consent agenda except for ten point five, ten point twelve, ten point fifteen. Um Julia, your advisory vote? All those in favor? Aye, show of hands? Okay, unanimous, motion passes. Let's start with ten point five.
So um ten point five is our investment in the early college STEM academy. I fully support this investment. However, I'd like to um make a request. Um for the first time this year, our investment in this program exceeds a million dollars. And um you know, that's a, that's a fair amount of money and presumably it's going to stay the same or increase over the years. Um I would just like to see um some kind of a a long-term budget plan for this program. That shows how we're going to um change allocations in our high schools. To fund the the fifty or so students from each high school who are moving to Madison College. Um I'm just, you know, that 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 equate, the amount of money that we're spending on this equates to probably two or three allocations per high school. And these are juniors and seniors where they're not all in one kind of English class or one kind of science class. That those fifty kids might be scattered across a lot of different offerings. So I'm just curious how we're going to balance allocations with the 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 fact that fifty year students from each of our high schools. Are heading to Madison College under this program.
So I can start and then I see Kelly on here, so Kelly can chime in. So one, we've create a sustainability budget model that we've shared with the board and are happy to give it to you again. And within that, it shows where we will begin to think about the allocation components of the schools. I also want to remind you that we received a grant slash donation from Ascendium, one point two million dollars. That spreads over three years, yeah, just to help us get to a sustainable model as well. And we still have two years left of that donation slash grant from Ascendium to help offset some of those costs. I'll let Kelly chime in a little more from the budget end.
Yep, Cindy's got it exactly right. Um there's an attachment in the back of the budget book that'll help give you um a lot of that information. And the reason we um have the grant is because Ascendium is helping us to implement this program over time. So that we didn't have to reduce allocation immediately. Um and are able to um gradually implement what is a program that is working very well. Um so it just as a reminder, these students aren't in our schools at all. They're spending um one hundred percent of their academic day at Madison College. Um so it would be right that the resources follow the students um as it relates to kind of the the high school allocation that otherwise would have happened. Especially now that the program is at the two hundred um level, um and two hundred kids. Um it's not fifty anymore. So we are moving in that model um that has been on track for since the day it's began. But we can uh resend some of that information.
And it would be great to get more details because um sometimes resources following the students can um lead to inequitable outcomes. For the kids who aren't leaving the schools, for the kids who are staying in the home schools. So I just want to make sure that we're ensuring that kids who are still in our high schools aren't losing out on opportunities.
Yeah, absolutely. But it's probably a really good time to remind everyone that this program is entirely designed to serve. Um students of color um and underrepresented females. So the intent of this program is an equity strategy and the budget has been designed as such.
I would just add low income and first generation college going, and our percentages have already exceeded what our goals were for that.
Okay, great. Anything else? Good. All right, let's go ahead and vote on this. I move that the Board of Education approve the expenditure. Expenditure of one million, two hundred sixty-one thousand for the tuition of students participating in the. ECSA for the period of September first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Through a partnership between MMSD and Madison College with funding from the twenty twenty, twenty-one secondary programs. And Pathways Department Operating Budget.
Second.
Nikki, second? Any further discussion? Julia, your advisory vote? Okay, all those in favor? Aye? Okay, motion passes unanimous. Next item is ten point twelve.
So um ten point twelve is um the renewal of our five-year major partnership agreement for C-bits. And um I fully support investment in mental health. However, I'm concerned about the process that we are using for renewing this five-year major partnership agreement. Um in the time I've been watching the board and serving on the board, we've never done this through the consent agenda before. We've always had conversations about major partnership agreements at a work group meeting, followed by a vote on the regular agenda. Following out of that work group meeting. Um this is a big deal. This is, you know, while I realize that most of the funding for this program is coming from United Way, MMS. MMSD is providing substantial in-kind services, you know, to the tune of a hundred thousand dollars or more per year. This is a five-year commitment to a major partnership. And, um, I'm really concerned that we haven't been able to talk about what came out of the evaluation as a group. We haven't been able to see a redlined version of the memorandum of, of agreement so that we can see what changed over the past three years. And we're committing to five years of a continued partnership. So, um, I would actually like to move to postpone consideration of this partnership agreement until we've had an opportunity to discuss it as a board.
Procedural?
Go ahead, Nikki.
I would like to put a, uh, temporary under Robert's rules of orders to temporarily table the mi- issue as Chris Cruzey would state until it could be further discussed at a later meeting.
Okay, um, so Savian?
A quick operating question. Would delaying this, um, impair any direct services so s- to students as we prepare for the school year?
Um, I don't know if Lisa wants to jump in. Um, we would essentially be operating without a contract, um, if we delay this vote. Um, if we were to provide services. So I would recommend that the board vote tonight, um, being that the school year is, is next week. Um, I don't know if Lisa has other input, but that's what my recommendation would be to move forward and we're happy to continue to talk about process with the board. I know there were some changes, um, kind of discussed among previous, uh, board officers um, around how the partnerships went. As a reminder, the board spent a considerable amount of time talking about, um, partnership agreements in the past and the idea was to thin the agenda so that the board could focus on what's most important to the board. Our understanding was that C-bits has, um, not only great outcomes, but year after year, the board has supported it and approved it. Um, we've had no red flags whatsoever coming from the board. Um, so our understanding was that, um, this was the way the board wanted to work in order to kind of skinny up your agendas. Um, so that, that's our understanding of the process and we can continue to talk about it. I'm sure, um, you will, but I will recommend that you vote tonight.
Anybody else? Lisa, did you have something?
No, I was just going to say, um, that I do know that, um, with this particular partnership agreement, it takes some time to set up our services and supports from our community providers. Um, Armando, I see that you just turned on your, um, camera there. So Armando, as a facilitator of this particular project, is there anything you think that our board members should know about C-bits moving forward?
Yeah, the, the only two pieces that, that I want to add is that the evaluation, as if you, uh, got a chance to read it, was solid in terms of supporting this program. Um, as you all noted, um, and also that the changes to the MOA, um, were minimal and we're also happy to submit a redline, uh, version in addition to the current version.
I think, I think for me, I think all the information is there, um, in our board packet. It's out there for the public to read. Um, I don't think, I, I need a presentation on, on where we are with C-bits and fully support us moving forward, um, on this. Ananda, did you have something?
Uh, I would think I support you, President Reyes. I, I was trying to understand a little bit since this is the first, I mean, we have felt the sentiment of this board was pretty unanimous around supporting this. So unless there is an information that has not come to the board in regards to raise our concerns, I would also move us to, to continue this item and we can certainly accommodate, uh, Cibit's presentation at some, you know. I, I mean, it's, it's, you know, ever important to, to have, uh, to have that information just overall around mental health. And love to have a presentation from Armando on how things are wrote, being rolled out. I don't know if we needed to delay a contractual. Vote. Thank you.
Savian?
Yeah, I think I'm in the same position. I don't want to see any direct services, uh, to students interrupted. Um, would love to see this board champion mental health, uh, for students and mental health services for students and mental, physical, spiritual being. Um, so, uh, I would support voting on this tonight.
Nikki?
The reason I am voting against, as much as I support the program, as the process, being an annoying attorney that I am, I am stuck on the process issue of putting it through the consent agenda as well. It's not the presentation that bothers me. It's not the organization that bothers me. It's the fact that the board wasn't given materials that were needed and it was put in a consent agenda. I, I need to be fully transparent. The only reason I would ever vote against it. And that's the reason why. It's not, I don't love it and I'd rather not vote against it. That's why I asked for tabling so I could get that information so that I could vote for it.
Okay, so I, I got a motion on the floor, Christina?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if someone can clarify when we are going to be discussing partnerships or high intensity partnerships and the, the process by which these move through the instruction work groups. Do we have a discussion on that coming up?
Yeah, Chris, um, that will come up when Andrew and I present in the cycles of review, um, which also includes the high intensity partnership process and review.
Okay, so if we could look at how these get put on agendas in the future and how they move through, um, basically board approval, I think that would be super helpful for us going forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, Julia. And then back to Chris.
Does not voting on this tonight mean that the contract doesn't happen and students don't get their PTSD treatment? Or does this mean that the contract is, or like the stuff is still happening, but without a formal contract?
We should not be operating without a contract. Um, generally, that would be against our own board policy and our own, um, procurement kind of rules. Um, I would, i- if that's how the board wanted to proceed, I would recommend you made a motion that, um, gave us that authority to move without contract, but I would not recommend it. It's not part of our standard operating procedures nor, nor our internal controls.
Okay, Chris?
So, um, I appreciate the concerns about needing to operate without a contract. Um, and I also, you know, fully support investments in mental health. However, I don't think it's good operating procedure for us to, to make a decision about a memorandum of agreement through the consent agenda and without having an opportunity to talk about what came out of the evaluation and how that's reflected in the new memorandum of agreement that we're agreeing to for the next five years. By not having that conversation, I think we're denying ourselves the opportunity to talk about some of the things that came out of the evaluation, like the fact that, um, fifteen hundred, um, kids were screened over the past three years and were found to have symptoms of PTSD but weren't placed in C-bits and are we able to meet the needs of those kids? Um, the fact that a quarter of the students actually had higher scores than they started with at the end of C-bits. Like, I really think, you know, that wouldn't keep me from supporting this program, but having that conversation, I think, is part of our role as policymakers and stewards of the district budget. So, um, I fully support C-bits, but I do not feel comfortable voting on a five-year memorandum of an agreement using this process. And I think in the future, our, uh, major partnership agreements need to be on work group agendas.
Okay, um, we're gonna go, we're gonna finish this up. Oh, we got Ali and Ananda. We're gonna finish this up. We're gonna take a vote. Move on. Ali?
Well, first, Gloria, you did introduce the motion. Has the motion been seconded?
Yes.
All right.
We are, definitely now, yep.
Okay, and I guess, I, I think, I, I hear a lot of folks saying they're not comfortable with specific things. Um, I'm wondering what the solution folks are comfortable with. So if folks are, are not comfortable, um, making sure that we have a contract with C-bits and ensure services to students in the upcoming year. Are folks comfortable suspending those services? Are folks comfortable, uh, motioning to continue services outside of contract? Um, or are we saying, hey, we have to have the conversation that Chris alluded to right now in order to make this decision? Um, and make sure our students have access to, to mental health support? And this is, this is a question for my fellow board members.
Option three would be preferable, but I would also, if I can't get the memo, I would prefer, she said for everyone. I'm sorry. I didn't know.
No, that's okay, Nikki. I just, I'm, I'm going off of what Chris, Chris's motion is to, is to, um, postpone um, this vote tonight. Okay, so that's what we're, we're operating on. Um, I, we can, obviously can't have the discussion tonight. Um, on the details that Chris needs, um, answered. So, um, I, I don't know if anybody else wants to answer all these questions.
Gloria, just procedurally, I'll point out that nobody seconded the motion I put on the table, so technically it's not on the table.
I thought Nikki did.
Did Nikki, did you second my motion?
Nikki wanted to table, Chris asked to postpone. Those are different things. So neither one was seconded.
I assumed I seconded and that I was an error.
I assume Nikki seconded too, but just used a different term.
Okay, so motion and second to postpone.
Yes.
Okay.
Nikki, now go ahead.
Very simply, Ali, I would, the work, the thing that I'd be okay doing if, since we can't have conversation tonight, would be to work without a contract and get this done as fast as possible. I don't like it. It's not something I would think is the world's best practice. The problem being with an MOU is you have to be in mutual agreement. I don't think a board can be mutually agreed on something without all the information that's just me. But I, as I said, I'm an attorney and I get weirdly hung up on process issues.
Thank you, Nikki. Ananda? You're on mute.
Sherry, were you going to try to illuminate us on something else?
I'm sorry, was that to me?
Oh, sorry, no, Sherry, Sherry turn on the camera. Were you going to add something, Sherry?
Well, I would just say that if it's tabled, we can't proceed without a contract. That is against our policies and it is not a legally appropriate practice.
So what I was going to say is that I don't disagree with Chris's comments. I mean, some of the things that you are highlighting are not necessarily new, uh, in regards to like how we're going to, and I think that there might be some potential exacerbation of, of, of how we're experiencing our students with mental health support. So, um, I would love to have the conversation, but I don't necessarily think that this conversation are attached to this contract. I think there are ways in which we can pass this contract and to monitor this contract and not only just monitor the contract or the plan itself, in, m- monitor or provide recommendation regards to implementation, which I think that's what I heard from you is the greatest concern. And I'm in full support of that. How we implement things are definitely like, uh, not just this plan, just any plan are my greatest concern.
Hey, Chris? And then Savian, and then you guys, we gotta close this out. We
Yeah, I think we should just vote on, um, postponing or not postponing. And if we do postpone, I think we need to either call a special meeting or get this, you know, vote on this as quickly as possible. I don't think we can postpone it until the end of September for all the reasons that have been stated. Like if we postpone, we need to make that as short a term as possible so we can serve kids.
Okay, Savian? And then that's it?
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, as policymakers, our job is to do no harm. Um, and I think, you know, proceeding without, uh, contract, uh, does, uh, pose potential harm to students with the school year, um, a week away here. Um, certainly, uh, willing to have more intensive conversations on the mental health of our young people in the district.
Okay, so now we are, um, Chris's motion, uh, was to postpone, uh, the vote here tonight and Nikki seconded. We had a discussion. Now, all those in favor of postponing, uh, this contract, um, show of hands? Okay, two? Those opposed? Okay, um, motion fails. Um, five, two. Barb, you got that?
Got it, thank you.
All right, so now we go back to the original motion. Um, I move that the Board of Education approve entering into a memorandum of agreement for a five-year renewal of the high intensity partnership cognitive behavioral intervention for trauma in schools, in schools, middle school focus, C-bits and middle school as set forth in the documents prepared for the August thirty first, 2020 regular, um, meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
Davian second? Any discussion, further discussion? Julia, your advisory vote?
Aye.
Aye, all those in favor? Aye, show of hands? Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, got it.
All right, next is ten point one five.
So, um, I just pulled this because I need to recuse from this vote because my employer has a major partnership agreement with American Family Insurance.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, I move that the Board of Education approve entering into a service agreement with American, uh, Family Mutual Insurance Company if I, um, a- and related expenditures for an innovation partnership in the amount of three hundred and thirty five thousand to support the building of MMSD staff skills, experience and capacity in alignment with the strategic framework shift. Uh, we embrace innovation for the period of September first, 2020 through August thirty first, 2021, using the twenty twenty, twenty one research accountability and data use department innovation office general operating budget. Second. Uh, Ali second? Any further discussion? Okay, all those in, or Julia, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, uh, six, um, one with Chris recusing.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is thirteen point one. Thirteen point one, City of Madison Education Committee.
We still have not met due to non-essential committee.
Great. Okay, Student Senate?
We'll be having our first, um, academic year meeting soon and we're also excited to, um, go on channel some TV show this, in a couple of days to talk with Dr. Jenkins, so.
Great.
Thank you, Julia. Um, next, MSCR?
MSCR, um, has a new president that we endorsed and, um, meeting discussed variety of things including, um, the childcare policy, which cannot be discussed right now. Because it's in flux.
Great, okay, thank you Nikki. Update on safety and security, Savian?
Yep, so the Safety and Security Ad-Hoc Committee has met two times. Uh, our meeting last week was very fruitful. Uh, we'll be meeting on September tenth. I'm sorry, last, last meeting we had, we, uh, discussed the current, uh, safety and s- security planning and assessment of that district wide. Uh, and then next week, uh, September tenth, we'll be digging into the RAF, uh, the, I'm sorry, we'll be digging into the role of our safety and security assistants in our schools and down the line looking into the philosophy and practices of restorative justice. Um, and I think we also have some new members to add. Or is that later?
Yep, you can go ahead and, no, these, these are students, uh, because we were lacking, uh, we didn't have as many students as we wanted, so go ahead, Savian.
Yep, so I move that the following MMSD students be named as voting members of the Safety and Security Ad-Hoc Committee effective immediately. Uh, Noemi, uh, Les, I'm going to mispronounce some names. Uh, N- N- Noemi, Leester, uh, S- Sicily, Grableau, Sophie Tal, Kennedy Buster, uh, Dewan Davis and Anise Stevens.
Second.
Anise, you're, or I'm sorry. Um, Julia, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All right, all those in favor?
Oh, wait, sorry. I had a question.
Sure.
Oh, sorry.
I'm so sorry. You didn't go for a question. I didn't know you were calling for a vote, Savian, I'm sorry. How many, um, restorative justice experts do we have on that group?
So we have Y- Y- Eugenia, we have, uh, Bren, and then we have Vanessa McDowell, um.
We have Stephanie. Or Lori, I'm sorry, Lori.
I was like, sorry. All right, thank you. Yeah, ready for the vote.
Your question, Christina?
Yeah, I'm just curious if the students represent all the four high schools? Are there representatives from each of the high schools?
Of that, I am not sure.
We, we try to get a wide representative, uh, representation. Uh, these, uh, names that we're approving tonight were, um, recommended by, um, restorative justice. were, um, recommended by, um, Restorative Justice, uh, the Time Bank Youth Court. So really, you know, we, we had a discussion about really wanting students with real life experience. Uh, and, uh, so they presented those names and Mike Hernandez worked to get other students assigned.
Alright, thanks.
Alright, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Motion passes seven oh.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you Savian. Um, next is Other Business.
Wait, there's an update on the other ad hoc?
Sorry, I skipped that one. I'm moving too fast. Okay. Update on the Citizens Ad-Hoc Committee? Who's gonna do that one for us?
That's me. Okay, how are you? Good evening again. So, um, the Citizens renaming committee, sorry, I went off, there we go. Um, has held its first meeting and the first proposal received was to rename Falk Elementary School after Malalele Chikasa Anana. Ms. Malalele was a charter member of the Madison Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, a sisterhood of predominantly black college-educated women dedicated to public service. Beginning her career as a freelance writer for Essence, Ebony Junior and the Black Scholar, Ms. Malalele served as the editor and publisher of Imoja Magazine, which she began in nineteen ninety to portray the positive aspects of the African-American community, a counterpoint to mainstream media's narrow focus. Imoja recently celebrated its thirtieth anniversary in publication, making it the oldest black magazine in Wisconsin. Ms. Malalele was widely recognized for her contributions as a significant part of the community. She was known as a mentor, advocate, community leader, trailblazer and village mother for her lifetime of volunteer efforts, activism, community organizing, extensive mentoring and willingness to serve. And with that, the Board of Education is seeking comment on the selection of Malalele Chikasa Anana and proposals for additional names to consider. Please submit any comments or additional proposals to the Board of Education by September thirtieth, two thousand twenty and more information can be found on the MMSD website homepage.
Thank you for that update.
You're welcome.
Covered it. Any, any questions, uh, from the board? On this, um, Ananda?
Couple of questions, uh, what, what is the response for other recommendations for names for uh, Falk?
So names have to be submitted and there has to be a proposal that comes with the name. So, so far we have gotten suggestions for other names, but we have not received any other proposals as of yet.
What is the proposal consists of? Is there a protocol? Okay, I know, I, I honestly, I'm generally like, don't know of a proposal.
So that information and Sherry might be able to, um, join in on that, but that information would be published on the, um, website and would be a place where people can, um, get that information and walk through how we need to receive the proposal.
Okay. And then I know that, uh, other schools have been also, uh, name including the Memorial High School. How, how would the board know when is there a proposal? Is it gonna come to us? Or when is it suggested?
I mean, um, we, we actually have a board policy on process on this, um, and it usually, uh, it starts, the way it comes to, to the board is we have a a community members who just get together and who want to, um, bring together, um, some recommenda- recommended names when we get and also a formal request, uh, that the board, um, convene a committee um, to review the names and make recommendations to the board. Um, and so, um, you know, it is a policy, I think, that we need to revisit. I thought that, um, ex- when I saw the policy, I'm like, it's just too it, it's, it's, it takes too long, um, and I, I think we really have to evaluate, we evaluate that, um, and how it comes to the board because it just so it's just, it depends on the community, right? On what they want and what they present to us. And then i- it comes to the board, the district leads the process as far as the committee goes. Um, the board does approve, uh, membership, but, um, the district does work administratively on the process.
In our rule, uh, since we had, uh, Dr. Virginia Henderson last time, I don't understand, like, if people are emailing us, making suggestions, are they getting a reply saying, "Thank you for your suggestion, here's the protocol for making a formal proposal or making a form of recommendation?"
Yeah, I believe Mike or somebody from the district is just ready.
Yes. Good evening, everybody, again, always good to be here. We will be responding to all of those that have sent in. If they provided a suggestion, we'll include information so that they can enter it, uh, send it as a former proposal, a formal proposal. So, that, and one thing that might be helpful to understand is there weren't any other proposals accepted for Glendale Elementary School or sent in as part of that process. So, that's probably why this one is going to feel more drawn out than, um, the Glendale one.
I think for me, it's most important is that we are transparent with the process, right? Like not, not responding to people or not saying actually, thank you, and this is the formal proposal, the formal protocol for it. I think that feels better to me than just not responding and just saying we actually did not receive anything.
Yes, to- totally agree with you, Ananda. And we were taken a bit off guard when all of these proposals or these suggestions came in. I expect, uh, by tomorrow, we'll have reached out, um, to all of them. And so if they wanted, uh, we started the timeline, so they will have time to do it. Um, so yeah, totally agree that, uh, they need a transparent answer and a response and, um, we will, we will move forward with it.
And for transparency, I'm full support of Ms. Malalele's, uh, name. I, I was also asking about Mike, since you have your camera on, is Memorial is now a proposal? Because I know that at first, it was a suggestion, but I, maybe nobody told her, like, here's how to do a proposal.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I, I know that the Memorial question had been raised before, um, so I'm not sure what the communication is. Um, I think that it was before my, uh, time. So I will follow up and make sure that, uh, we're responding to that one as well.
Yeah, I, the, the comment that we received this evening, she lives in Verona, um, not that that matters, but, um, I mean, I think we have to
The former student.
The Memorial community needs to
Yeah, she's a former student. She was a student at Memorial when she first came spoke.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody told her, like, you actually have to do this propos- this proposal and go through X, Y, Z. So that's, I guess that's my own, that's my question and my own, like, stretch and understanding as well.
Each one will be tracked completely separately and followed up separately, each and everyone. Everyone will know how to send in a proposal and what their deadline is.
Thank you, Barb.
Barb, you sound like the voice of God. From above to clarify, like, this confusing process. Thank you.
Sorry for the confusion.
The responses were, are already drafted.
Thank you.
And
Thank you, Barb.
Okay, and again, there's board policy on this. So can we move forward? Are we done? Okay, um, let's move on. Um, to, uh, the next is Other Business, it's the, um, uh, Hearing Officer, um, approval. So, whereas the Madison School Board Policy forty forty-five in Wisconsin State Section one two zero point one three, Parents One, Parents E, provide that the Madison School Board hearing after the board may adopt a resolution in which the board may authorize the use of an independent hearing officer appointed by the board to determine pupil expulsion from school and whereas such resolution is only effective during the school year, it is adopted and whereas the board desires to adopt such resolution and use in, use, use independent hearing officers to determine pupil expulsion from school for the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the use of the independent hearing officer for the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year to determine a pupil's expulsion from school and be it further resolved that the following independent hearing off, hearing examiner shall be appointed, uh, to the pool of examiners. And that is David Friedman and Ms. Wildsnick. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Nikki, second? Any discussion? Okay, Julia, Nikki, go ahead.
Just saying, I know them both. They both do a very good job. I've worked with both of them. I think they're both pretty fair. That's, as, as an attorney stating that, Sherry might have a different view, but that was just my personal, just sense.
Thank you, Nikki. Uh, Julia, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, motion passes seven zero.
You.
Um, next is the proposed recommendation relative to constructing a new school in the South Rimrock Road area. I move that the Board of Education approve the administrator, administration's recommendations, recommendation contingent on the November twenty twenty referendum passing, construct a new elementary school in the South Rimrock Road area for any elementary student living in the South Rimrock Road neighborhood. I further move that once the referendum is passed, a group be formed to determine programming options for the new elementary school. Finally, I move that as part of the long-range facility plan that Nuestro Mundo Community School relocate to the current Frank Alice site once the new school is built to align with, uh, the Nuestro Mundo Community School Board of Directors' vision for expansion of their program.
Second.
Nikki, second? Uh, discussion? Uh, Ananda?
One of the things that I appreciate the most about my colleague, uh, Nick Vandermeulen, is that she's extremely transparent on what issues she aligns and she always tell us what she's thinking and I as I was preparing my remarks for tonight, uh, in regards to this issue, I was really trying to channel you, Nikki, and
Aw, thank you.
To have a, both a balanced voice, but also to voice for a lot of members of the Rimrock area that have no idea this vote is happening, that have no idea that the Nuestro Mundo, uh, Charter Board had advocate for the building to go to Frank Alice and that are significantly impacted by having their children, their babies outside in a cold for forty-five minutes, sometimes an hour, waiting for the bus ride to Frank Alice, uh, in a forty-five minute bus ride and sometimes much longer depending on the weather. Uh, as someone that have personally experienced this and had, uh, advocated and organized with a lot of parents, uh, mostly Spanish-speaking parents, but a lot of African-American black parents and white parents, uh, that, uh, have demonstrated at school board meetings when school board meetings were not well attended, where we, uh, uh, not only organize parents, but, um, instill in parents a hope that if we can have a voice, if we know how to advocate, if we know where to find the Doyle Building, that we could come to the meetings and we can just, uh, you know, speak our truths and speak our experiences. And now that we have also inspired many Nuestro Mundo children to also do the same. Uh, you know, if you go back to the records at a two thousand twelve board meeting, a very historical moment for, I think, for the Latinx population in general in this community, but definitely for the Nuestro Mundo community where all of them were advocating for a new building and for that new building to be in the South Side. This was ten years ago. And we are here and then, uh, this vote is gonna come to where it is. Um, I, through this process, uh, I've learned that we have made some significant missteps in regards to our reach to, to the black community and the black churches. I was able to speak with Pastor Allen. Uh, we have made some, um, maybe uh, some assumptions of what, the limitations of what we could have done, like this school here did not need to be a lottery. Uh, the school here could prioritize, uh, members of this community, including, uh, black students in this community. Uh, there were assumptions around whether black families would want, uh, to learn Spanish as a second language. There were a lot of assumptions that were made, um, that prevented us to really think creatively about the South Side. And I do truly believe still that, uh, a school that values and uphold a culture of Spanish-speaking families, which is definitely not my culture, um, but is a culture of many citizens of the US uh, and is a sub, as a, as a, one of the strongest subcultures of our society currently and is a, a, a very extremely desirable language for any student to, to access and acquire in particular, uh, in particular in a public school setting. Uh, it is a school also that values a culture other than white. That Nuestro Mundo is one school. That's, that's the only elementary school that significantly values a culture other than white uh, in our, in our school district. And they have made that not because of MMSD support, but in spite of the MMSD challenges, in spite of many MMSD school board members that were uh, not in support of the charter school and not in support of renew of the charter and so on. Uh, I know that this battle was fought in a multiracial, uh, uh, community. Um, and there's still a lot of people that, uh, witness to that. So for today, tonight's vote, I will recuse myself. Not because I don't want a school in my community, not because I don't want our babies to walk to school, not because I don't want our city to see to pay attention and to potentially increase our sidewalks because we don't have that. To get bus, um, bus stops where ki- kids can actually stand on instead of standing on the streets when the grass is full of snow. Not, not because of that. I just want to make sure that you all know where my heart lies. This community does not deserve just one school. This community deserves more than one school. It deserves more than just one vote and this reserves more than you, you know, the, the paperwork that we were given. This community deserves our own voice. And we are again, are, are just doing what we can. And what we can is again, not enough. Because we, our vote tonight is still going to mean that brown kids are going to be on a bus the longest. And all the consequences that come with having kids in a bus the longest. That inequity is only experienced by brown kids in Madison. That inequity is experienced by brown kids all over this country. And out of all places, it happens right here in the city that has so much wealth and so much greatness. And that is a really sad day for me personally as a, as a former Nuestro Mundo family, as a parent of a Nuestro Mundo alumni. I'm deeply regretful of our inability to be extremely creative and our delay in regards to addressing a, a perpetual inequity in this community. Thank you all for listening.
So awesome.
Thank you, Ananda. Um, I, I, I totally understand. I think you're, you're making some great, um, points. Um, thank you for speaking, uh, from your heart tonight. I, I know that you are a, a, an advocate for our students and families, um, in that area on the South Side. Um, and I, I think that this is an opportunity for us to, based on what Ananda is sharing with us, is really an opportunity for us to really just e- evaluate and be innovative on what, um, this new school, um, can become. Um, and, um, although, you know, not a full Nuestro Mundo school, but there is an opportunity in the future to And, um, although, you know, not a full Nuestro Mundo school, but there is an opportunity in the future to, um, to have, um, you know, a bilingual, um, eh, have an opportunity for a mini sort of Nuestro, right, for our, our students on the south side, um, to, to ensure that our black and, um, while, and our brown students really benefit from this and, um, from learning a second language. And so I think there's still an opportunity to get Ananda where you are, um, what you, what you want, because I strongly believe in that as well, um, and we can be really just mindful um, about that in this new school, Ali?
Yeah, I wanna thank you, Ananda, for, for really allowing for us to have a unified and multifaceted conversation about, you know, the students that we serve and the opportunities that exist in our community for black and brown people, and not pitting, um, our communities against one another, but really looking for solutions. Uh, I fully support the referendums, that's why I voted for them, I fully support building a school on the south side, and I'm excited to do so, and I'm excited to continue to work with our community, to make sure people's voices are heard, and that the, the babies who are going to the schools, the, the moms who are living in these neighborhoods, the, the families, um, and neighbors are, are at the table and part of the conversation, and I think that's something, um, that folks have strived to do throughout this process, and will continue to do, uh, to a greater degree, and I think it's important that we are critical of ourselves, um, that we demand more of ourselves, and I thank you, Ananda, for, for doing that, but I fully support both referendums, and I fully support building a school on the south side, and I'm excited to see what it will be, and that is yet to be determined, so we don't know if this school will, will be a dual-language immersion school wall-to-wall, and we don't know if this school will be a school of the arts, um, and we don't get to decide that, we're asking our community to come and voice what they want, uh, and I'm excited to hear from them.
Thank you, Ali. Hey, Julia, your advisory vote?
Aye.
Aye, all those in favor? Uh, Savion, did you have something?
Um, I was going to say, thank you, Ananda, for holding us to an honest and high standard, um, fighting racism in our country and community, we're going up against four hundred years, and certainly understand the feeling that no matter what we do, it'll never be enough, but I think we have to start somewhere, I, I don't think this recommendation precludes our ability to help build a school that reflects the diverse culture that exists on the south side, including language, um, and I think this recommendation has the opportunity to bring people, uh, together to build a, a true multiracial school for students on the south side. Um, I, I do think that this can be an exciting opportunity, and I certainly hope that we can improve our engagement to families, students, parents that exist on the south side, um, it's certainly an area of the city that has a lot of, uh, educational a- activity right now, um, and I'm excited that, uh, to see how we can complement the efforts on the south side.
Okay, we got Julia's advisory vote, all those in favor, aye?
And I have a quick question. Just really quick, sorry.
Nikki?
Really quick. Ananda, thank you for your words. I'd be honored to work with you on the new building, and this is, this is harder for me to admit that I have a bias on charter schools, I'm openly admitting this. Whoever been to Nuestro Mundo, and been there many a time, have the like the place, because they do it, they do it right, and they don't discriminate against anyone. I don't wanna pit or two communities together, I am voting for this, but I can give you my word that I will help you to work, to make sure, we can make sure that this new school will still represent what it needs to represent. That I can. And I'd be honored to help. And I'm ready to vote.
Great, thank you, Nikki. All those in favor, aye? Show of hands, sorry. Okay, um. Nikki, do you have your, and, okay.
Yeah, sorry, it was off the screen.
That's okay, uh, any opposed? All right, uh, Ananda, you're recusing yourself? So, um, motion passes six, um, six, uh, zero and one, one recusal. Thank you. And, um, next is the, uh, amendments to the tax incremental districts. Um, I move that the Board of Education, direct Chris Carusi as the Board Representative to the Joint Review Board to support the amended project plan for Tax Incremental District, uh, number thirty-nine, as well as the use of the half-mile rule for TID number thirty-nine as set forth in the documents prepared for the regular meeting dated August thirty-first, twenty twenty. I move that the Board of Education, direct Chris Carusi as the Board Representative to the Joint Review Board to support the amended project plan for TID number forty-two, as well as the use of the half-mile rule of TED, TID forty-two as set forth in the documents prepared for the regular meeting dated August thirty-first, twenty twenty, so we got two, number, TID number thirty-nine and TID number forty-two, can I get a second?
Second, Ali Maldr.
Gloria, can I just get a clarification, are those all being voted on in one chunk, or are they two separate motions?
Well, I just read them on both, so I would imagine, I mean, if, if you have. If we have an issue, if one has an issue with one and not the other, then we can do that, but if we're good, we'll go ahead and. Are we good? It looks like we're good, okay. So, Ali, second it? Second the motion, um, any discussion?
Um, does anybody want me to clarify what we're voting on, or does everybody, did everybody read the memo and feel comfortable with the information?
I read it, I feel comfortable.
Okay.
Thanks.
Many, many thanks to Kelly for that great analysis.
What?
Great. Julia, your advisory vote?
Aye.
Okay, all those in favor, aye, show of hands? Okay, motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
We have no old new business, business, um, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, can I take a second? Uh, that was Ali, second, uh, Julia, your advisory vote? Okay, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all, have a good night.
Good night.